Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we're citizens, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exits. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and please do not use the elevator. The meeting notes are taken by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium, and please speak into the microphone. The meeting minutes are not intended to be a verbatim record, but only to indicate the sum and substance of the proceedings. The meeting work, the meeting is being recorded by our ICAT department broadcast on Spectrum Channel thirteen oh three and will be streamed on Facebook Live and on the IT, I-Town Media around the quite New York app available now on Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Apple TV, iOS and Android devices and around the quite dot org slash ICAT. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda with copies of the agenda near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and or agent shall come to the podium present their case. After the, during this time, the planning board members will have the opportunity to question and comment on the case. The applicant or an agent shall come to the podium to present their case, and I should reference and present it to the planning board only. For public hearing cases, the chairman will open the case for public input in which anyone wishing to speak regarding the case will come to the podium. State, you have to state your name and your address and direct all the comments to the board and the board only. Once all public input has been received, the applicant and or agent will be given the opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all public input has been completed, the chairman will close the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. Michelle, please call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First case on the agendas, case number PB twenty twenty-three dash oh five dash one. This case has been carried over from the five twenty-two twenty-two three meeting. The public hearing was closed on five twenty-two twenty-two three. Requested by Peter Vars, acting as agent for Ridge Portland Rochester LLC for revised site plan approval for the reconstruction of the ingress egress of the site on premises twelve thirty-three and twelve sixty-seven Eastridge Road in the Am Manufacturing District.
Good evening. My name is Megan Strini with being the associates in here for Peter Vars for Bridge Portland Rochester. Just here is the follow-up from the workshop meeting that was two weeks ago. I guess the only new development that we've had is that we've gotten DOT comments from the Development Review Committee from the county, and the first comment is that they are in support of the plan, so that's reassuring. We'll be submitting permit plans, but other than that, I think we're all set to go.
Okay, I know this was discussed at the workshop in prior meetings. Do anybody on the board have any questions? Seeing none, at this point, I'd just ask you to take a quick seat. We'll call you back up if there's any questions. I'm sorry, anybody from the town have any comments? Before you leave.
Quickly, Kate Powers, LaBella Associates. As you all are putting together your motion language, I would suggest having a condition where the applicant must satisfy all Monroe County comments. There are just some minor site notes, et cetera, that should be included on the site plans per their letter. It shouldn't hold up any action, but I think that's something that should likely be included as a condition.
You mentioned you got the comments. Did you have any concerns with the comments?
These are standard. We've actually included these same site notes on previous permit plans, so there's really no concern.
Okay, thank you. This is not a public meeting, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add into the record that seeker was determined back in August of twenty twenty at the August twenty-fourth twenty twenty planning board meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I'll move forward a motion. In regards to PB two zero two-three dash oh five dash one, I recommend that we approve for final site plan approval with the following condition that we satisfy all, that they must satisfy all Monroe County Department of Transportation comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was, I'm sorry, Mr. Burke? We're here all night. He was too fast. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes with four ayes, no nays, no abstains, and two absent. And we have one vacant, is that correct? Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Thank you. I don't know where you went. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Second one?
Next case on the agenda is a tabled item, case number PB twenty twenty-three dash oh five dash three, carried over from the May twenty-second twenty-two three meeting, and the public hearing was also closed on the May twenty-second twenty-two three meeting. Requested by GRH Architecture Engineering and Construction, acting as agent for Culver St. Paul Convenience, Inc., for revised preliminary final site plan approval to amend the previously approved site plan on premises twenty-four seventeen Culver Road in a C Business District.
Good afternoon. My name is Reza Armanish. I'm the architect for this project. We came to the workshop. What I did, what I, what I submitted basically S dash one, I submitted so you guys all can see what was before. So it's pretty clear that was existing survey site plan. The second sheet S dash two is basically what was approved previously in two thousand eighteen. And then we have two options. One is S dash two B, one is S dash two C. The only difference between the two basically is the location of the trees. The owner prefers that we don't put any trees along the Culver Road. He prefers the S dash two C. With that said, the rest, all the other item, actually, we provided more trees than what it was proposed originally, and I think I increased the shrubs as well. What I also did, trees and shrubs schedule, it was on S, S dash four, but I copied it and pasted on the S dash two on the upper right, upper left corner of the sheet, so you can see how many and what kind of plants and everything that we are providing. Other than that, the issue with the catch basin owner is going to provide the catch basin as is shown in, as far as the curb cut on Echo, it's going to be what it was approved, which is thirty foot. The green on the northwest corner is going to be restated. That's pretty much in a nutshell, as I'm sure if you have been to the site, you've seen the sign on the northeast corner right now, and that was approved previously by the board. Other than that, if there is any suggestion, so you're, you're open to it.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of things. As we talked about the workshop, two amongst ourselves, the two C option without the trees on Culver Road
Yes.
was amongst ourselves a better option for flow of traffic.
Sure.
The bollards, though, represented on this drawing
Right.
aren't what currently are there. Are we upgrading them as well?
Yes, what, what it is, if you go from the building southeast corner, the first one is correct. I measured them at six foot. This next one is nine foot something. The next one is ten foot something. But what the plan is, we're going to add additional bollards between, so make it less than six foot, which is originally proposed on the, on the Culver. On the Echo, there were always five, other than the first one, there were five foot on center. So in order to take them out and replace them, we're just going to add additional bollards in order to, so basically in order to satisfy that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, first for town staff, did we do seeker on this yet?
Yes, it was completed and it was deemed, excuse me, it was determined to be an unlisted negative declaration at the February twenty-six twenty-eighteen planning board meeting.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
February twenty-six twenty-eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, okay.
One thing I'd like to note, when we were excavating, we called DEC, they came and they have their probe and they put it and we passed and they let us, let us keep excavating for like a storm water, sewer water, sewer, gas, and electric. So they were on the site, we notified them to just be sure that everything is good.
Okay. I have one more question for town staff. In this process, I think we approved the sign and then they changed it in this process? I can't remember. I'm trying to catch up.
Okay, I can shed some light on that issue. Originally, the contractor with the owner, they had come and approved the, they got approval from the board for the sign. Now, the sign was three foot high base and then three foot by six foot panel on top. When we were proposing that to do it like a two foot eight inches, and I, I was trying to incorporate the banding that we have on the building. Later on, the owner said, okay, we got approval already, let's just stay with the original approval, and the contractor was ready to put the sign in. He didn't want to wait. I said, well, you got approval, just so it's the signed right now. The base is three foot high, it's all red brick, which matches the building, no banding, and the panel is the same size.
Okay, so it's not been changed from what you originally got approved?
No, sir.
Okay, never mind then. It was a little confusing along the way. Any other questions from the town board? Any other final comments? Any comments from the town?
Kate Powers, LaBella Associates, I would just ask that a condition be added to address LaBella comments from letter dated May twenty-second twenty-two-three.
What would you like that condition to be? I'm sorry.
That the applicant address comments outlined in LaBella letter dated May twenty-second twenty-two-three.
Do you want those addressed in the meeting today? You're concerned? We've gone over this numerous times.
No, so I'll just say they're all sort of minor, so something like including signature blocks on the all drawings, including a note indicating the variances that were obtained by the applicant, et cetera. So no, all the major items have already been addressed.
What was the date for that letter?
May twenty-second twenty-two.
May twenty-second?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Also, there's one other item.
Sure.
I believe it was from the Commissioner of Public Works for the, regarding the culvert on Echo Street to be put back.
Yes, they need to get a permit from the Public Works in order to remove that asphalt on Echo's on northwest corner, northwest corner, yes, northwest corner of the site, which is paved right now. So in order to remove that and seed it with grass and so that we need to get, the contractor needs to get a permit from the, or approval from the Public Works in order to address that issue.
So you want that added as a condition, Michelle? So you want that added as a condition, Michelle?
I would, I would recommend that.
Okay, so please word it for me. You want approval required from the Department of?
Obtain required permits from the Department of Public Works.
Okay. You can, we already had a public hearing, so that's closed, correct? Already did seeker, so you can stay there for a second. Do I entertain a motion?
Move.
You gotta tell me the case number.
I make a move that the, that the...
Oh, hold on a second. Do we have to remove it from the table? See that on here?
You can just make the motion to, if you're looking to make a motion to approve, motion to approve, SYC, case number, any conditions?
No, there's, on the record, it shows adjourned item. Do I have to move it? So here, I'll move it. So regarding PB 2023-05-3 for the adjourned item, I wanna, you know, bring it back to the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion. Mr. Evans?
Make a move that the PB 2023-05 be approved with the following conditions, the May 22nd, 2023 LaBella comments be added, that they obtain the permits from the Commission of Public Works. And there was one more.
Obtain required permits from around the Public Works Department.
Right. Obtain required permits from the around the Public Works Department.
Do I have a second?
I think we also need to know which plan we're approving.
Yes.
Because there's two options.
Up, the C.
The two C, the S dash two C site plan.
Got it? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It passes. Four ayes, no ayes, no abstains, two absent, and one vacant. Thank you, we're glad to see this gets wrapped up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number PB 2023-05-4, carried over from May 22, 2023. Public hearing closed on May 22, 2023. Request by Titus Romeo Land Company, LLC for site plan approval to construct an exterior covered fenced-in patio and signage on premises 717 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, I'm Frank Romeo. My address is 745 Titus Avenue, the owner of the property at 717 Titus Avenue. We've been here several times to discuss with you the addition of a covered patio on Titus Avenue for the new Monte Albano. We today recently received a letter from LaBella outlining ten items that were outstanding from the last meeting that we were here. Prior to that, I prepared new drawings, and I addressed eight of those items and turned those in when I got here to the town engineer. I can either go through all those ten items if you want, or if you're familiar with them, we can talk about the two open items, or I can do whatever you ask me to do.
Why don't you just summarize as quick as you can the items and then get to the two open ones?
Okay, so the first item was seeker, which we dealt with at the preliminary hearing, and that was taken care of. There were some dimensions requested to be added to the site plan, which we added. Number three was, we originally, we're gonna make the patio a little larger, and we were gonna remove some of the landscaping in one of the trees. We decided not to do that for numerous reasons and discussions with the board, so we're not removing any of the existing vegetation, trees, landscaping, so that's fine. The lighting, we requested an additional clearer drawing, which we've put inside our plant pack. We've given a little clearer updated information on the lighting rings and the fixtures. The canopy, there was a typo on one of the pages in one of the side view elevations, we've corrected that. The signage, we talked about it the last meeting, all of the signage is gonna have indirect lighting, there'll be no internally illuminated signage. We've updated the detail for that and shown the lighting on our detail sheet. There was some question about the existing vehicle impact. There's two large concrete planters that have been there since we built this building. They are being moved a little bit in accordance with the planning board and the DOT. We showed on our drawing where they're gonna be moved to with the dimensions. I'm gonna skip over one, two items. The last item was signature blocks, we added all the signature blocks to the drawings. The two open items are the patio railing, we proposed a wooden patio railing, there was some discussion about other types of materials. We decided, the operator of the property and me, the property owner, that we'd like the wooden railing, we thought it was a much sturdier look. It compromised, or didn't compromise, it complimented the building that was there. We think it'll be easier, people will be on the patio leaning on it. We really didn't wanna introduce a black metal, either aluminum or wrought iron railing, there's nothing in that area that complements that. So we'd like to stay with that, but obviously, we'll leave that for the board to decide, and we can update our drawing accordingly if there's any change. And the last piece was about the lot coverage. Initially, when we came in, we talked about increasing our impervious area slightly. We decided through mutual discussions that we would not change the impervious area. We would not change any landscaping, and we would leave that. I'm not sure I detailed that on the drawings to the extent that the town engineer would like, but I would let her review that and make any changes. If the board is so desirous in giving us an approval tonight, if you made that a condition of it, we would certainly update those drawings and return them, you know, in a timely manner for signature. Was that fast enough?
I think we are basing that on a net zero.
Yes, it's gonna be a net zero, be no change.
Yeah, so my note said that if you changed that, you would've had to go to the zoning board of appeals, so that was...
Well, that too, well, yes, that too. But we're not going to the zoning board, we're not changing anything.
Okay. It's been before us a few times, is there any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there any questions from the town?
Hi, Kate Powers, LaBella Associates. Similarly to previous cases, we ask that a condition be included in the motion language, that the applicant address all comments outlined in LaBella's comment letter dated June 26, 2023.
You said May 16th, correct?
Or is there another?
June 26th.
June 26th, okay. So question for you on that. So I see he's addressed numerous versions of that. You don't have an official response yet from him?
Could you be more specific?
Well, you said you wanted him to address, so it looks like he responded to all of them.
Sure, so if you go through the comments, I believe most of the items were addressed in the previous submission via a marked-up site plan, and so mostly these comments are stating, you know, please integrate those edits into the actual site plan drawing. You know, we had talked about the landscaping, and the applicant had indicated that the existing mature tree would remain, we just wanna see it on the site plan, so...
I just wanted clarity on what you were looking for, exactly. Does the applicant?
So we integrated those, I got her letter this afternoon at four o'clock. There was two things that I missed. One was the fencing, and the other one was the clarity on the net zero increase. So I'm happy to have her take a look at those drawings in the next week or so, and you know, if there's something I missed, or something she wants to change, I'll change it, I'll agree to whatever's in this letter.
Okay, so I heard there was comments regarding a wood or a metal railing. Did you want input from the board on that?
Sure, and so in that case, you know, my letter wouldn't cover that, since in the letter, we're deferring to you all. So I would ask that that be an additional condition, if that's something that you would like to see changed, but if that's something you would like to accept as is, then you can move forward.
So the applicant is requesting a wood railing, does anybody oppose to that? I'm not, is anybody? Nobody's opposed to the wood, so you...
Wonderful.
Clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You'll like it, believe me.
It's always, the property's always been maintained, so thank you.
It'll be like the Ponderosa, you can sit on it and talk to your neighbors.
Any other comments from the town? Okay, having said that, now, did we finish seeker, or do we have to do seeker?
Yes, you have to do complete seeker.
So it's a type two, correct?
Correct.
Just have to declare it as a type two? We don't have to take a vote, right? So it's a type two seeker, oh, I'm sorry. You can just stay there for a moment, we're gonna just move forward. So for the record, regarding case number PB 2023-05-4, for the purposes of seeker, it's a type two action. Is that negative?
You don't need to make a motion regarding a type two action.
Okay, so it's a type two. Do I have a motion regarding what's before us?
Case number PB 2023-05-4, final site plan approval. Under the condition that all comments from LaBella letter dated June 26, 2023 are satisfied, I make a motion.
I'd like to add to that, this is also for signage approval also, correct?
Is it on?
Yes. Yeah.
Final site plan.
Final site plan and signage on premises.
Yep.
If you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right.
And signage.
I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four ayes, no nays, no abstains, two absent, one vacant. Thank you, we look forward to it opening.
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to try and get this done in the next month for everybody.
Great.
Good night.
Next case, please.
Next item on the agenda is a town board referral. Request by Salvatore Lichardello Esquire, acting as agent for B&amp;R Breeze Enterprises, LLC for special use permit to operate a restaurant or eating establishment, drinking establishments, grills, bars, et cetera, with seating provided for more than thirty patrons on premises 4348 Culver Road in a C Business District.
So this is just a positive or a negative referral? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is, that is correct. This is not actually a public hearing, the public hearing is on the back of the agenda under case number PB 2023-06-5.
So we're doing the town referral and the public hearing on the same night? Should we just hear them together?
That's up to you guys.
I'm fine with that too. Okay, that works for us. So why don't we, why don't you present the case, and then we can rule on it at the same time, right? Okay.
Okay, my name is Sal Lichardello, I'm the attorney for the applicant B&amp;R Breeze Enterprises, LLC. They operate the Blue Palm Grill at 4348 Culver Road. They've been at that location since November of last year. When they first opened up, they were mostly just doing takeout. And they had seating in there for less than thirty people at that point. They did not have a liquor license. It was primarily takeout, and they were cooking some food in there for food trucks. Subsequent to that, the New York State Liquor Authority granted a liquor license for on-premises consumption. And the town fire marshal went in and inspected the place and gave them a certificate of occupancy for seventy-five people. The Blue Palm mistakenly took that as, oh, great, we have town approval to have seventy-five people in here, which they now know that is not the case, which is why we brought this present application. We have this in front of the planning board for a change of use there. We also have an application in front of the town board for the special use permit. And we will also be submitting an application for a variance to the zoning board of appeals. Because although they do have sufficient parking, a portion of that is within the town right-of-way. So that does not count as onsite off-street parking per the town code. So we're in the C Business District, which permits restaurants, you know, however, they wanna have seating for more than thirty people. So when they first opened up, they took over the old Marvin Macaroni's Pizzeria. And the town informed them that they did not have to come in front of the board because they were mostly doing takeout, and that use was consistent with the previous use. So under that use, a building permit was pulled. Renovations were done to the inside of the building, a sign was put up. That permit was closed out, CSC was granted. And so no new work is needed in connection with this application. There's no earthwork, site work. The only thing that changed there is inside the four corners of the space that they lease. Everything else is the same as it was. The area there is home to a lot of other similar operations as well. I measured it on Google Maps, it's like less than two hundred feet to M's Bar and Grill, which operates the same hours of operation that we like, and a very similar use there. You know, and they also have parking challenges there too. I think in that building, there's a restaurant and bowling alley. You know, and they also utilize a lot of off-street public parking, as well as parking along the side of the street. So I know the site plan we submitted, it was counting some of those right-of-way spots as onsite. You know, the tenant, the applicant here maintains those spots, so we were under the impression at first that they were the Blue Palm spots, because they have to go out there and shovel them and stuff, but you know, upon closer examination, they are in the right-of-way, so that is why a variance would be requested. And we'd ask that, you know, if this board feels comfortable approving the change of use of the site plan, that they would do so with a condition that applicant obtains the appropriate variance from the zoning board of appeals. There's also a lot of other restaurants, bars, north too. I know on that little map I put on the letter of intent, it kinda cuts a lot of them off, but north, you have like the Tap Room and Marge is up there, and there's a few others too that operate, you know, similar sorts of establishments. Also right across the street, 7-Eleven, which is open twenty-four hours, so you know, I understand a lot of the neighbors here are worried about like noise, and I've heard, you know, all cars are flying by blasting their radios, but they're not coming from the Blue Palm. There's a lot of, you know, activity in that area. And I know, you know, my client has complained to me that, you know, I wish there was something we could do about it, because it's, you know, it bugs, you know, their customers as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Sure, can you reiterate what the hours of operation are? Because I noticed in your letter, you state what they are, but then you said you're also asking for something different, so...
I believe there, I know in the letter, I put eleven to ten on Monday through Thursday, and eleven to one Friday and Saturday. Those are the hours that are consistent with what, the bar that's two hundred feet away from our building, those are their hours of operation too. You know, we'd like to stay open till two AM, but, you know, we wanna try to match the business patterns of neighbors in the community.
So those are the hours you're going with?
Yes, and I left Sunday out of there, and I just spoke with Mr. Ramos, who runs the Blue Palm, and they like to stay open till nine o'clock on Sunday.
Okay. So since we're doing these together, I just have a... So since we're doing these together, I just have a, I gotta ask you a point of, do we, can we rule on them together at the same time or should we get one out of the way and then?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can if, if you're ready. It, it depends how comfortable you are with the, with the overall, you know, site. I think, you know, certainly.
I'm comfortable with the recommendation, but I'm not comfortable until we do the public hearing on the other one to rule on that.
Sure, I, I was thinking, I, you know, defer to procedure, but do, do the public hearing now and then.
The recommendation.
Yeah, make, make both motions, but whatever.
As long as we can do it that way. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
What, when, what are the two zoning board appeals? Before one is parking and the other is what?
I think I just said for the parking.
For parking?
Yes. I, I did have something else I wanted to add if I'm not speaking out of turn here. We got comments from LaBella this afternoon. I sent over a revised short form EAF to address their comments. I left a few things off, I believe I addressed those. And also another issue that was brought up by LaBella was that, you know, the board focusing the review on the, the intensity, the number of seats that are offered. And you know, to that point, the number of seats inside the restaurant will not affect the amount of people that come there, right? Maybe when, if it's a, whatever night it is, you know, there's only so many people that are gonna want to come out to the Blue Palm for Latin themed dinner. So whether there's thirty seats in there or three hundred, offering more seats just allows the restaurant to seat those people quicker, keeps them from having to hang around and wait for a table, which would, you know, mitigate against having people standing outside, outside forming a line if they have to wait awhile for a seat. You know, and the, as far as the, you know, increase in traffic goes, you know, the restaurant that was there prior was the pizzeria, you know, they had a large volume of takeout orders, which also attracted a lot of traffic. And I, we do not believe that this use would create a substantial increase in that, how cars would be parked there longer. But they still, in my estimation, would serve less customers than the pizzeria did on a busy night. And I think that was it as far as LaBella's comments goes. And town, has any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the town, LaBella? Oh, sorry, did you have a question? Oh, got it.
So I just want to clarify. Is the board currently looking at the referral for a special use permit? And then after we close that, we will focus on the site plan? Or at this point, would you like me to go through items related to the site plan? I just want to make sure if we're segmenting it in a way that I'm not.
So since this is the first time we're doing it this way, I believe the attorney said we can do both at the same time, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think the presentation's gonna be the same. If we waited until item number ten on the agenda, he would just come up and do the same thing, so I think.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I'll, um, okay. So, as the applicant had stated and is included in my letter, that technically this is a change of use, but it's a bar restaurant to a bar restaurant. Really what the special permit is required for is the increase in intensity. That is for you all to discuss whether that intensity is appropriate or not, as well as taking into account the applicant's testimony of the current use of the property and the anticipated increase or lack of increase in a number of patrons that will be visiting the site. In terms of site plan, seeker isn't an issue as the applicant, applicant indicated. They submitted a revised seeker EAF part one in response to our comments. Sort of where it gets a little bit tricky is the parking as we had stated before. So I just have a, a question for the applicant. Currently, is the Blue Palm the only business that is within that structure?
No, there is another, I believe it's like a smoke shop or something like that.
Okay.
It's also in there. So I believe in that back lot, I want to say there's fifteen spots that are dedicated to Blue Palm, but I can check with the, the property owner. I know Mr. Catalani, he owns that property. And he indicated that he was willing to reserve more spots for the Blue Palm if the town required it. Because I think in the lease it only stated ten. But he indicated that they don't need more spots than that for the other uses in there.
Okay.
So I would, yeah, we're, we're trying to figure out the, you know, exact amounts. It's getting our application ready for the ZBA. But I know Mr. Ramos walked around and took a bunch of pictures today. Within about five hundred feet, there are over sixty public parking spaces. You know, within walking distance to the Blue Palm, we also have the transit and stuff too. But there is a lot of parking in the area, we just don't have a ton in that back lot. Which is why the variance would be required.
Okay, I, I just want to highlight that because the site plan, as you all know, is connected to the property, not necessarily just Blue Palm itself. So when we're calculating parking, obviously the applicant is focused on their own building when they're going through and doing their calculations, they're gonna focus on that. However, any other businesses or uses in that structure, that's gonna have to contribute to the parking requirement. Additionally, another question, so you had mentioned these, this unmarked parking area. It appears to be gravel. So who is the owner of that property?
I believe it's also in the right-of-way because it's on the north end of the property along Marionole. There's those marked spots, which those are the spots I mentioned that the applicant maintains. You know, which is why we went out there, he thought they were his spots because if he doesn't shovel them, no one will. And we were a little surprised to find out that they're not actually his. He just keeps them looking nice. Then, yeah, right to the east of those marked spots, there's that gravel area there. Along Sweet Fern to the west, you have spots along both side of the road. To the south, across from M's, there's a lot. East down Marionole, if you look at the first page of the letter of intent, I put that little Google screen grab there. And if you'll see east all the way down Marionole right before loops, there's a big lot that has, it's marked with a P. That's a public lot there as well. That, you know, the Blue Palm, if, if their back lot is full, directs their customers to park down there.
Okay, so, because initially, you know, looking at this site plan, what I would say is if these parking spaces were owned by a, a, a private entity, that there'd be some sort of shared access agreement or, or something of the like. But because they're in the public right-of-way, that's something that we'll have to discuss with Commissioner McGee with Public Works. Typically, private parking spaces are not allowed in the public right-of-way. I think that's something that we probably want to continue this conversation with, with the commissioner. And I'll also ask, so that unmarked area is, typically is it just the Blue Palm patrons as users of that space? Or do you see other people using it? Maybe somebody has a guest over their house and they are parking there instead of parking on the street?
I believe that's public, that anyone uses that.
Okay.
You know, if their customer at the Blue Palm sees a spot that is open, I'm sure they'd take it because it's so close to the restaurant. But my understanding is those are public spots that we would not have the authority to exclude people from using.
Okay. Like I said before, I think one of the major concerns is parking. And some of that is outside the scope of this board as they are intending to go for a variance for a waiver from those, the parking requirements. But I, I will add that something the board may want to consider is additional screening along that east side of the property. If you look, there are parking spaces that are perpendicular to residents. So if someone's pulling in, their headlights are going right in somebody's house potentially. And so I know that there's some vegetation that's there, but I think that in order to minimize impacts on adjacent residents, sort of bulking up that screening could go a long way. Also, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but for sanitation trucks that are servicing that property, are they front loading? I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, but I just want to know. They are? Okay, great. It, it makes sense based on the layout, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know much about garbage trucks.
Okay. Also, we may want to discuss the location of the ADA parking, but it, it, again, it kind of gets hairy because the parking on the north end is within the public right-of-way.
Right.
But just something you need to discuss. So, because it looks like the ADA parking is along that back door. Is that a public entrance in the back door?
Uh, I believe that's for employees. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Public or just employees?
You have to come up to the podium if you're speaking.
I'm sorry, I was just asking the applicant because he's there every day and.
You can, you can come and make up.
Oh, okay.
Just state his name and address.
Do you, would you like him to come up? Mr. Ramos?
Hello, my name is Brandon Ramos, seventy-one Bellevue Drive in Aranda Coit.
So now I don't know the question you were asking.
So i- is that back door a public entrance? So on the east side, it's not?
Nope, it's strictly for employees only.
Okay, so that's something we might want to just potentially look at the location of the ADA spots. Just because you want to ensure that it's the, the closest route to a public entrance. Accessible route.
That's kind of the tricky part is all those close spots are the right-of-way, right in front of the front door there. I mean, we're happy to allow that if the town would like to place a handicap marker in the right-of-way.
Okay.
To address that. And just really quick, to address your comments about the screening, that is amenable to us, but I just want to make clear that Blue Palm Grill leases the property there. So we would have to have a discussion with the property owner if.
He's president.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Whoever talking has to come to the podium, state their name and address, please.
Joe Catalani, one thirty-six Shore Drive, Rochester. So the, there's snow storage concerns too, you have to store snow. There was originally a couple of site plans before I owned the building, screening that was up there. And I, I think at that point, the town could have done, but they decided not to put it up. I think for that reason, for snow storage.
Okay, so that.
And then your other question on tenancies, they're office use.
Office use, okay.
Yeah, we have a union up there, so they're, they're gone by three, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
Mr. Catalani, before you leave, what's your understanding of these parking spots that are in the right-of-way?
They're town-owned, they, they, on both sides of Marionole, the town owns them. When Sealy was here before, they were actually talking about giving us the ones on the south side and giving the north side to the other building because they didn't want to maintain them. And they also had a number of lawsuits from Slip and Falls on those. And they wanted to get it out of the town's hands and it just never got to it. Covid came around and, you know, that was the end of discussion. But they're town-owned properties, they're demarked for two-hour parking from the town. They're town placards that are put up there from the town on both buildings. And they all use them during the day mostly, strangely enough, Jim Pappas uses them. He has his girls and people come over, he's busy during the day, but he closes again at three o'clock when these guys are just starting. So the parking seems to work out pretty good down there as far as everyone getting a, a pretty good whack at using them and not collectively at the same time.
You said the south side, I'm sorry, which, which parking spots are you?
The, the, so Marionole, you know, goes, is on the north side of the building. But there's two rows of parking on both sides that the town owns and that the town signs and limits to two-hour parking. It's meant just for exactly this use, so people can come and eat or go to, you know, there used to be a New York, so New York spot there. You know, different retailers in the area come in, do your merchandising, do, you know, buy vendors or leave. And so that's why they're marked like that.
Mr. Catalani, you have a.
Yeah, there's a salon there, there's, there's a bunch of different businesses.
You have a couple of businesses on the west side across the street without pretty large parking. Any success in go, in maybe negotiating joint use?
On the west side across the street?
Across the street directly.
Across Culver?
Across Culver. There's a restaurant there with a large parking lot next to the, the Putt Putt Golf.
Oh, that, that's Jim Pappas.
Yeah, Jim, okay.
I mean, they could talk with him, I, I don't know, you know, if that's something that'd bear fruit. But there's a lot of parking around there regardless of that. There's right out that door, both of those two town, essentially town lots, there's a, a ton of parking there. Right down at the end of the street is the beginning of the, the old five ninety feeder. There's a full parking lot there, it's a block away. And that, that, that right-of-way goes all the way down the street, not just in front of our place. It continues on. And then you've got parking on the park side in the street going down towards the park. And then across from Estrellas, you have their parking. You know, a lot of these businesses are closed. Estrellas has a, has a fairly sized lot, a good sized lot for their business. But sure, nothing would prohibit them from talking with Jim and seeing if he'd be amenable to that.
I have a question for the town. So in my package, there's this discussion from a prior DPW commissioner. Has that been discussed in a workshop or at this meeting?
I just got it today.
Sorry?
I just got that today.
Just got that today. So should this be entered into the record? It's dated.
I would say yes.
I'm sorry?
I would say yes, because it was directed to the, it was an email that was sent directly to the town board.
Okay, so for our purposes though, we should, we should enter it into the record, it should be read?
I don't know.
It's pertinent to this discussion, I, I just want to make sure. Has the applicant seen this?
I have not. I'd like to hear what he said though, unless it's negative for our application, in which case I'd prefer it's burned.
It's neither negative nor positive, how's that?
Perfect.
I believe, but I don't want to make a.
Bernie, might as well, if you're providing the recommendation, consider it.
So could you please read it into the record, Michelle?
Okay, email received, June twentieth. Hi, Kimmy. Hope you're well. This evening I tuned into the live broadcast of the town board meeting and specifically discussion about the Blue Palm. As you know, I reside in Brighton and while I have opinions about this change of use, I spare you of those because they are not, they are moot. However, I did want to provide you some historical perspective about the Marionole right-of-way and specifically the parking immediately north of the Blue Palm. The Marionole Park right-of-way is not square and is rather wide. This dates back to the early nineteen hundreds when Seabreeze and Duran Beach Trolley Line traversed what is now Seabreeze Drive and Marionole Park to Duran Beach. Like so many cases in Aranda Coit, the right-of-way is unnecessarily large and probably should have been deemed surplus property, properly up, up proportioned and transferred to adjacent property owners years ago. Again, a moot point. When I was commissioner of the Department of Public Works from two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, the operator of Marvin Mozzarella's moved his business from directly across the mini golf course to the location of the Blue Palm. I believe the gentleman's name from Mozzarella's was Dave De Forte. At the time, the parking area in question right-of-way was dilapidated with a hodgepodge of gravel, asphalt and concrete. Mr. De Forte approached the town and asked if he could improve the area. I recall the town agreed, perhaps even issuing a permit, but we made it explicitly clear that this work would be done solely on Mr. De Forte's dime and under no circumstances would he be allowed to claim any sort of exclusivity over the improved area for his patrons. I believe if you check with Ann Dohler, there should be copies of written correspondence from myself to Mr. De Forte in this regard. I also recall some neighboring businesses, business disputes around this matter as employees from Parkside Dunard would use the improved area and that upset Mr. De Forte. Time went on and everyone seemed to figure out a way to get along. So this, so that is the historical perspective that I hope you find useful. I would be a remiss if I did not caution the town about multiple uses in that building that the Blue Palm is in. Traditionally, it has been used as office space in a sit-down, take-out. Traditionally, it has been used as office space in a sit-down, take-out pizza shop. Now you have leased office space, a vape shop, albeit this generally partners, generally garners pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, and now a full-service bar restaurant. I believe the town should be very careful reviewing the parking needs of all leased spaces, and also take into account, there's no exclusivity over the parking on Mary Knoll. I don't know the operation of Blue Palm, however, I suspect they have been operating to date with a beer and wine SLA permit. I don't believe the site plan for the property has ever been thoroughly reviewed for available parking and maneuverability. So, it is good to see the planning board will be doing that. My last point is that we would be careful about the fully amending the town code to eliminate special use permits for the higher sensitivity uses, density uses, excuse me. This may be appropriate for some uses, but going from a small restaurant with perhaps a beer and wine permit to a full-service bar restaurant adjacent to a residential zoning area is something that should never be taken lightly. Again, I hope this was useful, and thank you for listening to my thoughts. Marty Piazza.
Thank you. A lot of information. Any other questions? Having said that, this is open for a public hearing, correct? Oh, no, oh, well.
Not the town board referral.
Not the town board.
The town board referral is not advertised as a public, or does require a public hearing.
So, why don't we get the town board referral out of the way first, so that we don't confuse this? So, they're asking us either for a positive referral or a negative referral. Anybody want to take a stab? I'll take a stab, so I think it should have a, they're already in business, I think it should have a positive referral with a close look at the parking. Second, about the zoning board. Anybody disagree? Okay. Sorry?
The town board, yes.
Referral, yeah, so this is in regard to the town board referral. Request for a special use permit to operate a restaurant or eating establishment, drinking establishment, grills, bars, et cetera, with provided seating, provided more than 30 patrons on premises 43, 48 Culver Road in the Seabusiness District. I'm going to propose that it's a positive referral and a strong review of parking. And effect on neighboring, on residential area, residential. I'm adding that, so if anybody opposes, let me know. An effect on residential property adjacent. Is my motion by me, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's four aye, no nays, no abstains, two absent, one vacant, in regards to the town board referral. So now, in regards to the preliminary and final site plan approval, could somebody go over a seeker for us at a high level? Is this a type two, or is this...
I believe it is a type two.
Okay, so it's a type two. All right. So now, I'll entertain the public hearing, correct? Thank you. There's a making me work tonight. Open the public, oh, you can please have a seat, thank you. I'm going to open a public hearing, anybody who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and address it to the board.
Joseph Di Pasquale, 40, Mary Knoll Park, been a resident of Mary Knoll Park for 32 years. This is totally inappropriate for our street. First of all, the business, the Blue Palm, the doors open to Mary Knoll Park. Tonight, when I came down, doors are wide open, noise is going to travel down our street. Totally inappropriate. Parking is a nightmare. People on Mary Knoll Park, very few houses have driveways. We park on the street. Where are we going to park if the restaurant's taking all our spots? It's a narrow street, you say on both sides, and then the, I believe it would be the south side, you say there's a town right-of-way. Who's going to maintain that? Town doesn't mow it, the residents mow it. Who's going to plow the snow when the cars are stuck on the right-of-way? Who's going to do this? It's just totally inappropriate, too big for that corner. It is not the same as what Maseronis was. Maseronis, people came in, pick up their pizza, their spaghetti dinners, and they were gone. Two o'clock in the morning, you're hearing car doors slam, people hooting and hollering. You know, I have to be up at five o'clock three days a week, I don't need that. It's totally inappropriate. First of all, how are, if they... There had to have been construction going on inside, where were the building permits? Why were we blindsided when this place opened? All of a sudden, we have a full-service bar on St. Patrick's Day with a live band playing. How did that happen? No answers from nobody. I think they're trying to force something down. The residents of 40, the whole Mary Knoll, Sea View, any of those small little streets that are over in that neighborhood are getting a bunch of crap crammed up their throats. It's just not right. And then, well, this is not your issue, I won't go into it, but it's just not right. It's not appropriate. Parking, there, now we have a head shop open. Nobody was told. How did that happen? All in the same building. It's just not right. That's my opinion, do with it what you want.
Thank you, for taking the time.
Hi, my name is Tina Lopez, I live at 20 Mary Knoll Park. I'm the first house adjacent to Blue Palm's restaurant. I have a driveway, thank God, but it only fits three cars. I wanted to have a birthday party this past weekend for my mother. I couldn't. Friday, Saturday night, all the public parking was gone. His lot was full. Adjacent to my house is town parking, two to five, two hours, that's it. And there's no, people park there at night, the poor lady who owns her little yoga business is suffering. I'm suffering because they're parking there, I have a son that's disabled, here's all the boom-boom from the cars, and all the people just making loud noise, and just rude patrons, rude patrons. Stay there for hours. And I'm up late at night because the loud noise wakes my son up. He's Down Syndrome, he's autistic. So, I'm up to one, two o'clock on Friday, Saturday nights, when I should be going to bed, so I can get up and take care of him in the morning. It's not happening, there's no, there's not room for the, I want this business to succeed, but this is not the appropriate place for Blue Palms. Blue Palms should have met with the people who lived in Mary Knoll Park and got an insight of how Mary Knoll Park works, as a group of families living in these houses. People are pitting cones up to protect their parking spots where they live. We shouldn't have to do that. And you shouldn't have to walk miles to get a parking spot for your family member. It's just, it's not right. I've been there 19 years, haven't had a problem until now. My kid doesn't sleep, I can't have family over because there's no public parking at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Elvin Ramos, I reside at 2820 Culver Road, past fireman for the town for many years. I also manage the Blue Palm Grill. On top of that, I will add that since I've been managing the Blue Palm Grill, this past winter, the public parking side, I do maintain it, I plow it myself. One, and two, the doors, when they're open, the music is very low. One, and that's during the day, we make sure that the doors are closed at five o'clock, that's if we even open them. And I will add to this, that the town needs something of a Latin and American food of cuisine of some sort. And I think it would be very bad for the town to go against this. It's a good thing for the residents, it's something that the town really needs. Slowly but surely, I noticed throughout the 15 years here, everything is either diminishing slowly or moving out. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address?
Good evening, guys, Craig Young, I reside in the city of Rochester, 96 Ashwood Drive.
96, I'm sorry?
96 Ashwood Drive, sorry. Ashwood, Ashwood. Yes. So, in the time since we've been open, I've done security, and I branded security there with a number of people underneath me. We understood that there was an issue for parking, and we went ahead and hired another security guard that specifically stayed out front. And I'm sure a lot of the residents saw him, he drives a big black truck with a big yellow light that went ahead and, you know, spun, they saw, in which we did somewhat of a good job, what we thought was a good job, in policing the property and making sure that the parking was up to everybody's standards. We didn't want, we didn't want an issue with the neighbors at all, we don't want an issue with the town at all. We come humble, very humble, we really do. We want to come here and show you guys that we can maintain the same space as the neighbors without any issues. However, in that time, we've had some difficult issues as far as with the neighbors, and certain things that have taken place. But I can tell you now, that as far as the booming and stuff like that, we don't leave the doors open at all nights of the hour, our hours of the night, sorry. And not only that, excuse me?
Please.
Once again, so now...
Guys, you have to address the board and the board only, thank you.
Okay, as far as the patrons are concerned, okay, we do a very, I feel like I do a very good job of greeting every patron, making sure that, hey, listen, guys, when you guys leave, leave quietly, that's it, okay? We had numbers of people calling the cops one night for an event in which we had no live band whatsoever, at all. We had no live band present whatsoever. What there was, was a DJ, that was it, there was no live band at all. Okay? As far as the booming and stuff like that, like I said, the, the, the amount of traffic that passes by Blue Palm, okay, is usually headed towards the beach, the loud cars, all the music and stuff like that, okay? They usually head towards the beach, because now, what you have is, you've got people with nice cars trying to show out for the car show, that they try to get in where they can. Unfortunately, the town has allowed them to go downtown, or not downtown, but go down towards Seabreeze, so they can show off their cars. But it's Blue Palm's fault. That's not the case. That's not the case at all. That is not the case. Like I said, we come very humble, very humble. We have reached out to a bunch of the neighbors here, very humble. But once again, we can only do so much. We've tried so hard to go ahead and make sure that everything is, we try to go ahead and help you guys out, we try to go ahead, you guys see me out there, in a big security shirt, okay, to make sure that every, that the piece is kept, that the piece is kept between the neighbors and the patrons. But we can only do so much. We're trying.
Thank you. Anybody else, please?
Hello. Been a resident now for five years here.
I need your name and address.
Dustin Waterman, 184 Pleasant Ave. So, I've been here at least five, six times now, never had a problem parking, parking everywhere, there's, I don't know what they, there's parking right across from Adams, up in town. That shouldn't be an issue, no issue at all. I just wanted to say that, great food, best food around. Hate to see anything happen. I didn't prepare anything, that's just what I wanted to say, and it's great, great food, that's me, and I'd hate to see that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address?
Good evening, my name is Chad Tricky, I live at 27 Duran Boulevard. I have a three-season porch that I spend most of my nights on, that stares straight into the parking lot, the back parking lot of Blue Palm. You know, we run into things such as, when you had Maseronis as a small business, they didn't have a lot of garbage. When you have a full service, you have a lot of garbage, stuff piles up. You know, when we look out our porch, we get to stare at their dumpsters, packed up, tall, you know, the garbage company does come every week to do stuff, but there's a lot of things, as a growing business goes, that has to be remedied. We get to deal with all the lights, we get to deal with the customers leaving, squealing the tires, whether they've been intoxicated or had a drink or two before they leave when they were there, we get to deal with that. As the other gentleman mentioned, you know, they put a big truck out there, they put lights on it, yes, it draws attention, it's meant to be security, but it also disrupts the neighborhood. I own a small business, I love to see businesses flourish, but there are, as he was saying, there's give and takes that have to be done with the business. And that, you know, as a whole, everything needs to be able to work together, and currently, I don't think we have the right gel between stuff. I do not have the answer for it, I wish I did, but I do think there needs to be some more continuity between that business and our neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you.
Sujele Acevedo, 93 Lenkor Park.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
Sujele Acevedo. Service manager at Blue Palm Grill. I feel like these are small hiccups that can be remedied real easily if everybody puts their own little grain of salt, and there shouldn't be any back and forth, it's a new place, it's a family-oriented restaurant. Once you walk in there, you feel like you're not in Rochester, New York anymore, it's like a vibe that you feel like you're in Florida, you're in Puerto Rico, you know, it's great food, it's a great environment. We will do everything that we have to do to make this better for everybody else, as long as we're not hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
My name is Jason Zakoski, I live at 395 Hellendale Road, Arondecoy. I'm the accountant for the Blue Palm, and I can tell you from a financial perspective, you know, everything is in order, taxes are paid, all the licensing has been approved, that needs to be approved, there's significant payroll taxes being paid, significant jobs being generated from there. And as a resident, I can also tell you that where I live, we have very similar issues when businesses start opening, and eventually, it kind of disminutes themselves, they get to work it out together with the neighborhoods, we do the same thing, we do the same thing with parking, we want to have a party, we have to park a quarter mile down the street because it's a busy road, so, I mean, similar issues that what I'm hearing here, that we were able to work through with the local businesses and with the community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ellie Cole, I frequent the Blue Palm often with...
Address, address, please.
31 Hammond Street, Rochester. I frequent the Blue Palm often, they have amazing food, they did an amazing job inside the restaurant, it's beautiful, and just, you know, watching them and all the effort they put into this, it really reflected in, you know, the way that they're doing business now. I've never had a problem parking, and I also, like I said, I do frequent the restaurant with the rest of my family, so, and I have never had a problem having my entire family find a place to park and make their way into the restaurant. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Robert Longkowa, 37 Netherton Road. I'm one of the owners of Blue Palm, and we recently started doing business about three months ago, it was St. Patrick's Day, and we started off with a bang, and I kind of think that that kind of rattled the neighborhood a little bit, not only from us, but from other businesses in the area, everyone was just, it was just a wild night. So, I think some of that kind of reflected on us. So I think some of that kind of reflected on us. As far as parking, we're in a, we're on a main street and there's a biking trail there. A lot of my employees either take Ubers or even take the bus. Just yesterday, I had a group of six come in that rode their bikes. So it's kind of, it's kind of difficult to about the parking. Obviously, we have a back parking lot on whatever side that's public. But I've also reached out to some of the neighbors myself personally and like said, if there's anything I could do, here's my number. Don't hesitate to call me. Anything I could do to try to fix it, any problems you have, because we want to get, we want to, like, we have to coexist with them. So we want to make them happy as far as us to succeed, you know? So if there's anything I could do to help you guys out.
Please, address to the board.
Okay, sorry. If there's anything I can do to anybody that would help, you know, smooth things over, make everyone feel comfortable, don't hesitate to ask me. And I will do my best to make it happen. That's all I can say.
Hi, my name is Marisol Longkow. I live at thirty-seven Netherton Road. That's my son. I am general manager for his other businesses, business, which is Rob's Kebabs and a couple of other food trucks. I do go to the Blue Palm quite a bit just to support and I actually reach out to the patrons that are there just to find out how they like it, how it's going, how the food is. And so many people have come up to me to say that this is really needed in the area. They don't have any, any restaurant like this. They don't have a place like this. It's really needed. They have to go somewhere else to get the same atmosphere and the same vibe, but the same food. They're, they're just really happy that there is something different in the Seabreeze area. So that's all I have to say, but.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Diaz, forty-two Avondale Road. I actually live right next door to where the Boy Scouts sell their trees. My house is the one that used to where Cal Ripken Jr. grew up. And I mean, for example, they just spoke about the lights and bothering the neighbors. I mean, that usually happens to me, so I understand what it's like to have bright lights and things like that. But I mean, believe it or not, it's a small price for something beautiful that's being brought to our town. I mean, just like the Christmas lights, we needed something different, something new, something fresh, something to bring this town back to life. As far as the noise, honestly, I've driven down that road many a time and it's usually going to Duran. Everybody that's either going to Seabreeze, coming from the city, veering off to go down to the beach, you know, the youth these days. I have older children that feel safe, that love going to the Blue Palm because not only is the food amazing, but they get treated so well with respect and they feel safe. They've never had an issue with parking. And I know the guys there and everybody that works there, from what I've seen, they treat me like family. And I would highly, highly, highly appreciate if you guys would support the Blue Palm. Thank you.
Next person that'd like to speak, please, come to the podium.
I got one more thing to say.
You can't, you can't come back up. Hold on until everybody's spoken.
Hello, my name's Catherine Ann Schinkin. I live at seven twenty-seven Harvard Street. In case nobody knows, Harvard Street is like off of Park Ave. It gets kind of crazy sometimes, but at the same time, I live in the ABC district, which is all about family. Yeah, sometimes people will come and go and things will get crazy, but in the end, it's all about a community. And I've been to Blue Palm several times and that's what that place is. That place is all about community. It's all about family. I'm kind of blunt, so I'm just going to state this. I kind of feel like a lot of it's kind of tit for tat. And we just got through COVID. Like, I'm going to bring that up because COVID took out a lot of businesses, took out a lot of families, made a lot of people homeless. And this place is offering jobs. It's offering a safety net. It's offering food that you guys don't have here in Arundecoy. I've literally grubbed up food from there because I live in the city. And it's been nothing but amazing every single time I've gone there. I've never had a parking problem. I just think that with proper communication between all parties, that things can get resolved in an adult way. And I think it'd be a shame to put out a business when we all just start getting back on our feet as a nation even. I just think communication kind of makes the world go round and I think that they should be known for everything that they do because they do do a great job at everything. That's all.
Thank you. Next person that hasn't spoken yet, please. Go ahead.
My name is Jim Schleich and I live at thirty-four Marion Old Park. Who doesn't love good food and drink? Anybody? So I do and I, I love small business. I want to support small business, but that's not what we're talking about here. Everybody that's come up here so far has said, I live someplace else. I, I live on Marion Old Park. Nothing against Blue Palm. The area is already crowded. The corner of Duran Boulevard and Culver Road is a crowded mess in the summertime. In the wintertime, not so much. It's very seasonal. It's very loud. And it's very obnoxious. And it's not the Blue Palm's fault. Nothing against Blue Palm. The area is noisy. There's not enough parking for already what's down there. I mean, to hear everybody talk, yes, there is. But I disagree. So what we're really talking about here is noise and disruption. I've heard talk about hours of operation and that there's other bars and restaurants down in Seabreeze. Yes, there are. They've been there for a long time. So now, does that mean that there should be another one? Again, nothing against Blue Palm. The residents in the area have hours of operation too. We need quiet at night and we don't have it. I don't know how many people knew that this was going to be a public hearing tonight, but all of a sudden, it's a public hearing and there's not a lot of people here to support what I'm saying. Again, I, nothing against small business and the Blue Palm. Again, I love small business. I love food. I love drink. I'm all for it. And everybody who comes up here and says, we need this in Arundecoy, nobody wants it in their backyard. Am I correct?
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to address the board? So the person that wanted to address the board again, is it something different that you didn't bring up before? Because if it isn't, I have to.
What's different about it is, is that, you know, everybody's who's coming up here. Tina Lopez, twenty, Marion Old Park. I've been there nineteen years. The thing is, that's different. We had Maseronis there for the nineteen years I lived there. Maseronis left in March of this year. Blue Palm's open March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Totally different atmosphere, okay? Boom, music, all that. All these people coming, not from around Arundecoy, but from the city.
I got, but I'm not gonna, you already brought up a lot of those issues when you spoke.
All right, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we need quiet. I want quiet. That, that's, that's what I need on my street. When I want to go to bed, I would like quiet. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address the board? We can't keep going back and forth, guys. It has to be a totally new subject, so.
So Chad Tricky, twenty-seven Duran. I just want to note that I've lived at this address for twelve years. And as we were talking about hours and noise, with Em's is in my backyard. We never hear a peep out of Em's. When we sit on our porch, we stare at the backyard over there, the back of their building, there is constantly noise in the evening to be expected, but I'm just saying, you know, hours of operation, if they were open till midnight, that would be sufficient. I know Em's is open till one, but we never hear a peep out of anything that happens over there.
Thank you. Guys, I can't keep allowing people to come back up.
I'm about to answer this question. I'm sorry if that's possible.
We're not, we don't go back and forth, so I apologize. So I gotta cut it off. So is there anybody who hasn't spoken to the board yet? Okay. For the moment, I'm not going to close the public hearing until I hear more discussion from the board. Because a lot of issues have been brought up unless there's any opposition to that. So right now, I'm going to leave the public hearing open, not take any other input. I would like the applicant to come up and address the comments.
Thank you. Sal Lichardello, attorney for the applicant. I definitely appreciate all the neighbors' concerns. You know, I, I understand that, you know, they live there and, you know, they don't want noise to disturb them. It's a perfectly valid concern. I would like to point out, though, that I didn't do that. This has been a C business district for a long time. I think longer than most of the people that got up here and said, but I've been here five years, been here twelve years. It was a business district. I believe when all of them bought their homes, if I'm wrong about one of you, I stand corrected. I apologize. My point is, if you buy a house next to a commercial district, you got to expect that there's going to be businesses operating within the confines of the code. As far as, you know, hours of operation, noise, if something is above the acceptable levels, I hope the police department would be down there chewing out the Blue Palm, telling them they need to curtail it. They want to abide by every single law that's on the books. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, we're worried about noise, if it reaches a point where it exceeds that, I can guarantee you that they will address it and fix it. And I think that's it. That's, you guys have gone through enough tonight.
It's okay. So does the board have any questions? I got a couple I want to.
Yeah, I just want to address possibly the dumpster issue, possibly. Obviously, it is pizza shop to a restaurant, right? Full service now. Is there an opportunity to possibly get multiple pickups during the week scheduled or a better dumpster enclosure possibly? I didn't see something on the site plan regarding that. I haven't even opened it, but.
We could certainly look into that. I, I've never heard of any issues with the dumpster.
Our dumpsters are fully enclosed in a gated area already.
I think you got to say your name.
Brandon Romo, seventy-one Bellevue Drive. Our dumpsters are already fully gated with a six-foot enclosure. It's picked up once a week. It's never gotten to the point, or I'm, let me take that back. One time, two weeks ago, it got to the point where the garbage company wasn't able to get to access to it because some mailman or somebody was parked in the area. So at that present time, our dumpster was a little, the lid was open. They came that Monday morning. This was a Friday. They came Monday and they took care of it. However, that dumpster is fully closed. We have the exterminator go over there twice a week, clean up around the area, check for rodents. We haven't had any issues. So.
So I would like to point out, I was going to bring up the same issue. So on your site plan, you do reference where the stockade dumpster enclosure is. We would like to see how that's built and what it's built out of. So is it concrete block? Is it just gate, et cetera?
It's a six-foot privacy fence, wood.
Okay, so that would come before us. Normally, we like to see concrete dumpsters, okay?
It was, it was pre-existing already when we took over the establishment.
Okay, you're coming for it before us for a new site plan. So we like to see a dumpster that's, you know, fully in concrete block. That way, it cuts down on the smell, the noise, et cetera. So I'm just going to share that with you. I'm not going to say we're going to make that a condition, but you're not depicted on the plan. We'd like to see it depicted on the plan where it is so we can also see how you get to it, et cetera. The second thing I wanted to bring up was, I heard testimony that originally there was going to be shielding to the neighbors and I heard testimony tonight that there is concerns about the lights and so forth. I would like to see you consider putting some type of more shielding to the neighbors on that back end. In addition, if that causes a problem with the snow removal, you'll probably have to make arrangements to have snow removal taken off-site. That's another option. Okay, anybody else from the board have anything? Hearing none? Any other comments, questions?
No, I do, actually, I do have one more. I just want to echo what the co-owner said. I, I do agree that Blue Palm and the neighbors got off on the wrong foot, you know, after they got their liquor license and, you know, they got their letter that they could maximum occupancy seventy-five and they were under the impression that they were a full go. There was not a ban there. There's ninety-seven point five radio station came down. There was noise. And there has not been since. You know, they understand that it impacted the neighbors and nothing like that has ever happened since and won't happen in the future. I truly do believe we just got off on the wrong foot with them and we can maintain a reasonable operation here that won't impact the neighbors. I guess I just, to the board, you mentioned the screening to the east to block lights to the neighbors. If we put in some, like, some shrubbery there along that side that, at a height that would block headlights, I think it sounds like that's the main concern. If we showed that on the plan and installed that, is that something that would be sufficient?
The landscaping is something to create a barrier. Not, not looking, you could propose something else, but at least vegetation or something that would block the, the screening from the neighbors.
Okay. All right, we'll look into that and revise the plan to reflect that.
And I would like to see the dumpster so we can understand how you get to it and how big it is and what it's made out of.
Okay. Is this board going to require that that enclosure be destroyed and rebuilt with a different type of material?
We tend to try to not to create a situation where it causes more money, but it's going to be up to the board to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Based on what I've heard with, I, I would make that recommendation, but the board may say that since it's pre-existing and it's kept in good shape, that, you know, that that would be sufficient, but that's up to the board.
Okay, we'll see if there's any reasonable ways to beef it up a little bit, you know, make it look nicer.
Okay. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do these things, but I'll let the board speak for the rest, what you feel at this point. John, do you have anything to add?
Just in terms of the dumpster enclosure, you know, if we replace, you know, what's there in same location, I guess my only question is, and this might be for staff, is that dumpster enclosure on the public right-ofway?
That's why I wanted to see exactly where it was because it almost looks that way on the, on the map.
I'd have to review it again, but when I first saw it, I thought it was interior to the rear parking lot, but you're saying that it's not entirely within private property?
Yeah, it looks like on the northern hand side. It goes in, if that's, if the right-ofway continues over the property line to the north, it would be over the property line.
So it sounds like there are various site elements that you all would like to see revised. I think it might be worth expressing those things to the applicant and then coming back with a revised site plan for you all to review to ensure screening is adequate, the dumpster, the, the material, the enclosure, the location, et cetera. I think we're also pending a lot of things because obviously, you all know this, but just for the individuals who are here in the audience, that you all are not the decision-makers on the use. You are just recommending and that they have an opportunity to go before the town board. The town board is the authority on the special use permit for special use permits in the C district. And so that's pending as well as ZBA. We also need to determine the exact number of required parking spaces. There likely needs to be a discussion with commissioner or public works. So I think this might be a good opportunity to provide feedback, have the residents and individuals that are here provide feedback so that we can put those on a site plan and take a look. Obviously, pending all these other approvals, potentially, it won't even get to that point, but we don't know that for certain.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we also need to define where the right-aways are. Because when I read the letter that I got this afternoon and looked at the map, it was, it was kinda confusing had, had where things are.
I agree to everything that was just said, so. And I was starting, that's what I wanted to gather from the board, is other things that they like to see on the site plan. So if it does come back to us, at least you're prepared, right? So it's not a surprise. And we do do a workshop where you can present it prior to the next board meeting. Okay. Mr. Burdick, did you have some things to add?
I think it's still gray, your hours of operation as well. What you say you will do and what you wanna do versus what are we doing? So I think we could truly lock that down to truly what, what are you doing? What, what is your proposal, not three, four options? We, we wanna stay open till two, but we will close at one because other people do.
Right. I brought that up just to show that they were trying to be reasonable and make concessions and blend in with the community. But one o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays, midnight, Thursdays, night, whatever, what's in the letter is accurate. Except for Sunday, I didn't put that in there, but I can, yeah.
Is there a economic benefit staying open that extra hour?
Which extra hour, from midnight till one?
Or from one to two?
Well, from one to two, there absolutely would be. You know, I was discussing with town staff, though, you know, you don't wanna, M's 200 feet away, they close at one. You don't wanna become the bar that all the drunk people wander over to to get their couple last drinks before the night's over. So you wanna match the, you know, the, the patterns of the neighbors. But yes, there would be, the bar, the restaurant, you know, would, I mean, at 1:00 AM, you're probably, the kitchen's closed, so it would just be serving drinks at that point. So, it would be more profitable to stay open later. But they are willing to make that concession to try to blend. And we can, we'll submit a revised site plan to reflect your comments and...
So before we wrap up, you're, you're in agreement then that we're gonna table it for this meeting? You're gonna come back. When, are they before the town board and before zoning next?
Application is not made to the zoning board yet.
No, I think...
They're before the town board for another public hearing, July...
Eighteenth, I think.
Is it the eighteenth, Sal?
I think the deadline for the ZBA is like July 7th. But we're not gonna wait till the last minute to submit that.
Thank you. July 18th is the next, is the public, is the scheduled public hearing for the town board's special use permit.
And then zoning board, if they do get on, when is that?
It would be August 7th.
Because anything we would do would be dependent on that, that approval anyways.
Right. So there isn't much harm in tabling it, except you'd have to sit through listening to me talk again.
Right. But my only concern is, is parking seems to be a big concern. So, I'm just gonna recommend that maybe we wanna get that out of the way before we come back for a workshop, because then we're talking about things that, that we can purview over site, you know, versus not knowing if that's been resolved, exactly how many spaces there are.
Leave it up in 100% to the zoning board and then, if we can wait, I understand what you're saying.
Then we know how, what we're dealing with, right?
Right.
And is the handicap parking adequate, et cetera, so...
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's anything we can do about the handicap parking, because the closest spots are in the town right-of-way. But I, I receive your comment, though.
Thank you. And sorry it got to this point, you know, I don't understand myself.
I don't either. We're doing the tour de ronde coy, we're hitting up all three boards.
Yeah.
Triple crown or something, I don't know.
Yeah, all these things should have been discussed prior to opening, is the way to do it, so I'll leave that to the town. I don't, I don't know how it got to us at this point, so... Oh, the referral, you wanna readdress it? Nope. Yeah. So, we gave you the recommendation based on what we knew at that point in time. Unless somebody wants to alter that, I think we're good at this point. And let's just hope we get all these issues resolved and you take all the input and, and we're gonna table it. Do I have...
Thank you.
Yeah, do I have a second on that? Do I have to take a vote on the table or just table it?
No, you need a record of motion.
We're leaving the public hearing open. Yeah, the public hearing's left open for everybody that's here, the public hearing's open. You'll get to see the revisions, the changes, and then you can make any other comments you wanna make at that point in time. But the motion, I'll make the motion that we're gonna table this. Second, hold on one second, I gotta make sure I got the right paper. We're going to table this, and I got a second from Mr. Burdick. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Next case, please. Next.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Yes. Donna, you have one of these? For the record?
What's my name? Next item on the agenda is a tabled item. Public hearing case number PB 2023-05-5. Request by Marathon Engineering, acting as agent for Ridge TM LLC, for preliminary final site plan approval to subdivide an existing 3.047 plus or minus lot into two lots to allow for the development of a 21,000 square foot building on Lot 1 and development of a 3,000 square foot building on Lot 2 with site-related improvements on premises 1733 East Ridge Road in Ridge Road Plan Development District.
Before you start, so I'd like to make a motion to remove this item from the table. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Please go ahead and start.
Good evening. I'm Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering. With me tonight is John Schell from my office, Vanessa Banks, who is the architect, and Angie Garcia with the ownership team. We've been before this board, both at public hearing and at workshops over the last month or month and a half, and received good comments. I think we've addressed the majority of comments. We did receive a LaBella comment letter recently that we have gone through what was in that letter, and most of those are technical. There are a couple that I wanna circle back and, and just comment on or discuss with the board to make sure that we're on the same page as far as how they'll be resolved in anticipation of that being conditioned. When we were here before the board last month, there were a couple of outstanding items, the major one being the zoning board of appeals and the need to obtain several variances. And this board seemed to be in favor of the project and was looking to potentially take action on final, preliminary and final approvals tonight, pending the outcome of that zoning board. I did wanna relate to this board that we were successful in obtaining all of the variances. The zoning board agreed with the placement of the building on the site related to that rear setback or to the setback to the private road along Skyview there, the parking space size and drive aisle size in conformance with the other districts within the area. And we were able to get the glazing along the front up to 45%, 45%, where we had originally had it at about 20%. I think that addressed several of this board's comments or concerns related to the face of the building to Ridge Road. So we were almost able to get to 50%, but, but landed on 50. And then at the workshop at this last go-round, which I think several of these of you members were present, we were asked to prepare some perspectives along the west face of the building as traffic goes eastbound, because it is masonry primarily with very limited, if any, glazing and just what that was going to look like as, as you drove along the road. So, I'm gonna let Vanessa kinda talk through what was handed out today for this board's consideration.
All right. Vanessa Banks, APD Engineering and Architecture, 615 Fisher's Run Victor. So I developed these renderings for you guys, so you can get an idea of what the building will look like while you're going, well, eastbound on Ridge Road. As you can see, right next door to the proposed Aldi is an Applebee's. So, when you're coming eastbound on Ridge, the Applebee's and its existing vegetation was kinda in the, the view. So, the addition of making that back more articulated will be lost in the fact that there's already so many site elements that would impede anyway. So as you're traveling down, yeah, you can see it a little bit, but we also have our proposed vegetation along the rear, which would cover up any windows if we were to add more windows or any other articulation around, along the rear, making it moot. My, I discussed the proposed, the comment, the LaBella comments, which also, which went into detail about how the building looks. And I discussed with my client and we came to a decision that we already modified our national standard for how our Aldi buildings look like to get to the glazing requirement as best as we could. We, we removed one of our materials completely in favor of glass. So, we feel that we've done enough updating to what you would typically see around the country that it, yeah, it would, we feel that having an Aldi in the neighborhood would be more beneficial, would be beneficial regardless. So, stopping it for a few pieces of glass you may or may not see is kinda, kinda, yeah. Sorry.
You wanna tell us how you really feel?
Yeah. I'm great with my words.
So if I could, just walk you through the proposal or the proposed views. In the upper left-hand corner are existing pictures as you go eastbound along the street. And then the main picture or focus is that view with the building added behind. And if the board remembers, we did change colors along the back to give it a little bit of variation relative to it.
We also changed materials, too. So, and not just brick, it's also fiber cement on the back as well.
So the different colors are different material to break, break up that facade.
Yep.
So, these aren't numbered, but the one with the Applebee's sign kinda more prominent with the right hand, with the existing figure on the right hand, I think it's the fourth sheet of what was handed out. You can see that there's some nice breakup along that rear of, of the building with the different colors, different materials, and also the existing and proposed vegetation. So we think that that hopefully addresses the comment or question that the board had related to how visible or how much of a blank wall feeling that you would get as you traversed East Ridge Road in the eastbound direction. And we think that that satisfies the comment.
And the other comment that was mentioned in the LaBella comments was the lack of base, mid, and crown sections per the Ridge Road, sorry, Ridge Road Planning District. If you look at the surrounding areas on that road in the, near the plot, none of the surrounding buildings would match it if we were to comply with that. The Jason Applebee's is all brick. The apartments, I think there are apartments across the street. There's a, there's a bunch of different brick buildings across the street where, yeah, so... We just feel that the surrounding area, surrounding context, just, it's in our favor for how our building looks.
I, I think you're missing the point is that the purpose of the board is to address the future growth of the town. And what you're addressing is things that happened 30 years ago that we're trying to change. So I would be careful at, at your direction that you're heading to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Evans, please, Mr. Chairman, can you please ask the audience to mum the chatter, please? It's very difficult to...
Everybody, there's still a public meeting going on. If you need to converse, please go in the other room. Thank you.
So if I could address that, thank you, Mr. Evans, for that comment. We had brought the facade drawings to this board at the workshops and also in the, in the planning board meeting previously. And that comment specifically about base, middle, crown was not brought up in previous discussion. I think that the board was generally happy with understanding that Aldi has a prototype that they wanna maintain as close as possible for the look and the feel, as well as the addition of the glazing and some of the other things that we were able to accomplish. So, we understand that we are not fully in compliance with those, but I think it's at the planning board's discretion as far as what the building looks like and, and those design criteria. So, we're requesting that the board approve the plans as submitted. I think that the applicant and architect have modified quite a bit from those national prototype standards. Not to say that there's ever a finish line to what can or can't be modified, but that, that is the request. And, and I think generally the discussion has been that the board likes, likes the way that it looks. So if there are some final tweaks that have to be made or that kinda thing, we'd, we'd be open for discussion. But I know the desire is to, to move forward with it the way that it is. I wanted to touch on a couple of other comments that were in the LaBella comments. I know generally in the letter, many of them say, hey, that we have addressed them to the town engineer's satisfaction. I know that the comment about building location was brought up again related to that. I think we spent quite a bit of time with this board explaining the reasoning behind the building placement, the location. And again, the zoning board did concur with that design and granted the variances as shown on the plans that you have before you. Landscaping, there was several comments about landscaping, most of which we've addressed or, or can tweak for final location as mentioned in there. There was one specific location at the north end of the parking lot proximate to East Ridge Road, where it was noted that the landscaping was a little bit sparse there. There's a Monroe County Water Authority easement through there that would preclude us from planting trees in it. We definitely can take a look and work with LaBella on adding a few shrubs along that area to help screen it, but that was the reason for limiting landscaping in that area. Signage, there was discussion both about location and style. We were not able to get prior to the board any information about how they comply with Dark Sky compliance. We can definitely, if that's a condition, submit supporting documentation on that and how they're going to comply with that requirement to the town staff for concurrence or review prior to any signatures. From a location standpoint, the desire is and the proposal is for a shared sign. So we could do essentially, within code, two monument signs at 100 square feet each in front here. The goal is to provide one shared monument sign with the Aldi panel on the top and then a panel below, roughly 33% of the Aldi to get to that 100 square feet on a shared monument sign. We think that'll look a little more cohesive and not have two large signs out along a relatively narrow frontage. So that, that is the proposal. And we have located that sign more proximate or closer to the inner section of the entering drive, just to kinda give people the clue or the indication of what driveway that we would prefer them to come in on or use at the traffic light. There was also a comment about traffic. I know we provided trip counts. We will be coming back here if and when that out parcel gets designed or we have a tenant for it. So this board will see what comes in there and will have a better feel for a specific user and traffic generator at that time. The final comment I wanted to touch on was stormwater. I believe that those are mostly technical or interpretation relative to what will or won't be required and sunset clauses on being able to claim redevelopment credits. So if, for example, that out parcel is not developed over the next five years and we return it to law, and we would then be required to design a practice or design the site as a greenfield versus it's mostly parking lot now. In five years, I anticipate that the stormwater regs will also have been updated by then and we would be required to be in compliance with, with current regulations there. So we'll work with LaBella and their, and their stormwater folks on making sure that we're all on the same page on the interpretation of that, what notes need to be put on the plan so that the town has a record of it. And generally, again, I think unless the board has some specific comments, those were the ones that weren't clearly or cleanly resolved, I think, in that, in that previous, or in the letter that we just received. So with that, love to answer any comments or questions that the board may have. And I, I believe that the public hearing was held open last time, but I don't remember that. I'll stop my head.
It was held open. So I have a question regarding the sign. So, I, I see where you had two on your original pylon sign, but I don't see where you had two listed. So what are you asking for tonight?
On, we submitted a monument sign. There was an update to that that was submitted with the LaBella letter.
You guys had that?
And it just slid that panel up and it had a panel underneath it.
So, it looks like this, but it's on top of a monument sign, is what you're saying?
Exactly. It's just slid down into the brick. Yep. We're looking through our file to see if we have an extra copy as well. But it's code compliant for the size within the district and height.
Does the board have any questions before I ask LaBella to go through the letter? We just got... just got today? I don't see, so could LaBella, please, we just got this letter today, so could you walk us through it? So?
Sure. Kate Powers, LaBella Associates. Um, I'll start off and then, um, Wes will likely jump in. Um, so I'll just start off, um, with the design criteria as the applicant has already gone through. They've discussed some of the updates that, um, they have made in response to these requirements as well as the variances that they received. Uh, LaBella is of the opinion that, um, the design, uh, could be further improved. Um, we've had this stance since this first came before the board, so I won't necessarily beat a dead horse, but I will just say, what's the point of having a planned development district or an active transportation plan or a comprehensive plan if the individuals who are making the decisions do not uphold, um, those goals and objectives? Um, so, uh, and then beyond that, um...
Could you delve into what exactly you're pointing out?
Sure.
We just got the letter, so I want to...
Absolutely. So, um, when we looked at the design criteria, we had four different points. Um, these are the same points from our previous letter. What's in black is our additional comments. So, um, the first being, um, the facade that obviously, um, received a, uh, area variance, um, already. Um, but we did note that TM Drive, even though it's been sort of discussed of saying that's the rear of the building, it's fronting a public road. So, I mean, arguably, it's not the rear of a building if it, if it's adjacent to a public road. Um, and so we believe that, you know, further elements could be, uh, integrated there, including the articulation of the crown, mid, and base. Uh, we talked about faux windows, um, et cetera. Um, next, building composition, sort of similar to facade, um, going back and, and talking about that, uh, further articulation along TM because technically this is a corner lot. Um, next, building placement and orientation. Um, we've outlined some excerpts from adopted town plans, including the comprehensive plan as well as the active transportation plan, um, that specifically call out East Ridge Corridor, um, and what we would like to see moving forward in the future. Also talking about taking advantage of the opportunity of new development versus redevelopment. Sometimes you just have to work with what you have. Sometimes it's just adaptive reuse, but then there are opportunities where it's a brand new building. You could put it anywhere. Um, and so we've listed out some of these elements. Like I said, commercial corridor design specific to East Ridge Road, um, saying that building should not be set more than 20 to 30 feet from the street curb, um, facing primary streets, uh, and that corner lot should address both streets, meaning, uh, both that are, are there on this site. Um, main entrance located close to the road, parking should be hidden from the corridor, um, et cetera. Um, so, and obviously the, the applicant has come forward and, um, provided rationale as to the placement of the building. Uh, we believe that this building could reasonably be moved to the corner. Um, it would take a redesign, obviously. You couldn't necessarily just move what you have forward. Um, and then, uh, parking and loading area design, uh, as was mentioned previous, there is some screening. So ideally, the building is going to be at the corner, right? The parking isn't going to be along the road. Um, but in this case, um, there are some, there's landscaping that is proposed sort of, uh, on the west side. There's a, a lack, um, further on the east side closest to the proposed quick service restaurant, um, but the applicant did provide rationale of that there's currently, uh, an easement there that, uh, would preclude potentially veg, mature vegetation, et cetera. Um, so that's sort of an overview of the design criteria that, uh, we outlined in our letter.
If I could just back up a little bit, Wes Petty from LaBella Associates. So the reason, one of the reasons we kind of keyed in on the architectural component of this, and as you, as you've heard, right? This parcel is in a planned development district, which is a different zoning district than what's immediately adjacent.
Sorry.
Being the Applebee's, right? That's a different zoning district. So, and there, these, these new renderings that were provided today, that is very helpful, right? Because it gives you an idea of what this development is actually going to look like. And, and like the applicant's representative said, there's some vegetation on the adjoining parcel that's going to, uh, screen to some degree, uh, the side of the building that, that faces TM Drive. So, and they've also provided what seems to be a reasonable ar, argument or basis for the building placement, right? We, this goes back to, I think, the service, uh, the service entrance or the delivery drive and not having, um, visitors to the facility, you know, crossing, getting in the way of trucks, that sort of thing. So maybe, maybe there's some trade-offs. Maybe there's some negotiation here that the, that the planning board has if you want to. We're just calling these, these tools to your attention should you find the, the need or, or the, uh, the reason to, to fully, to more, uh, fully support the comp plan and, uh, the intention of the, of this zoning district, the PDD zoning district. So, uh, with that, I'll just leave it there for you.
If I could respond, ask a couple of questions or respond to a couple of those points, um, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wes and Kate, but the, the comprehensive master plan and the studies that are, that are here are recommendations, but not necessarily codified. So, for example, talking about pushing the building to the street, well, right now, within the planned development district, the front setback is a 30-foot setback. So there aren't necessarily all of the pieces that are in some of these recommendations written into the code, and a lot of that's left to this, this board and/or the zoning board for, uh, for interpretation and, and discussion. So, a, and I, again, I think we spent quite some time talking through this with the board, uh, at our previous appearances. Number one, because we didn't want to get too far down the road with this direction if, if that wasn't going to be something that was acceptable. Number two, we were looking for the zoning board to have a comfort level that the planning board was comfortable with what we were coming to them to ask for as well. So I just wanted to remind the board some of the steps we've gone through already to get, get to this point.
Matt, that's helpful, and I, I do agree with you. Yes, the comprehensive plan itself, the, the transportation plans, those are not regulatory documents, right? And, and, uh, but they, but they are things that the, the town, that the planning board can, can look to uphold. I don't think we object to the placement of the building. I think, I think you've made your argument there that the placement is, is likely reasonable. So if, and if you do read the top of our comment there for, uh, the building placement and orientation, our response today, we did say comment satisfied, so long as the planning board agrees with the applicant's design and, and so on and so forth there for building placement. So, um, it's, it's just, we could, we just wanted to make sure that you're happy with the architecture, uh, on that facade that, that is, that faces TM, that public right-of-way there, which they've kind of shown these architectural rendering, renderings. That's it.
We can continue. Um, so a lot of these have already been covered, um, mentioning how, uh, the quick service restaurant will come for a separate site plan approval and we'll, we'll look at traffic separately. We just wanted to make that apparent in our comment, um, number four regarding traffic, that we have, um, come with draft seeker language parts two and three. And in that review, we solely looked at the, um, projected trip generation for Aldis, and we're not considering the quick service restaurant. That'll be considered at a later date. Um...
And I, I just wanted to remind the board, the reason that we show that on here is for purposes of seeker to kind of show you the larger plan, but we're also going to be stubbing a couple of utilities that have to come through the Aldi parcel just so it doesn't have to be ripped up in the future. That's the only intention of, or why we included that in the application before you.
All right, just, just to, uh, continue, continue on with LaBella's review, the lighting, we appreciate the applicant, they providing the, uh, catalog cut sheets for the light fixtures. Uh, we're pretty happy with those. Um, the luminaire schedule, we can address that with the applicant if there's anything, uh, further to address on the, on the plans that are provided for signature. Um, a lot of these comments, let's see, illumination contours, we got an updated lighting plan. We're all set with the, uh, lighting plan. Um, there's been a light added to the back of the building, so that, that addresses, uh, one of our comments there. And then with regard to stormwater, uh, our stormwater reviewer was a little confused or, or didn't quite fully understand the, um, the long-term plan or the, the full build-out of the site in terms of what's happening with stormwater overall. I think we're happy with just, if we just look at the Aldi, Aldi's parcel alone, I think we're satisfied with what's going on there. It's just going to take some further review, uh, going down, um, you know, going down the line in terms of when they come back with a, a subsequent plan for the quick service restaurant as to whether or not, um, anything further needs to be done with stormwater. I think, I think we can probably work with the applicant on, on addressing those. Uh, we don't yet have a SWIP, but they've indicated that they would provide a SWIP before final signature, and we can, uh, we could probably work with that as a conditional of approval. Uh, let's see. Just a couple of technical comments there. And then the sanitary sewer lateral cleanouts. So we understand that glued joints may have been, um, acceptable in, in the past. We know that the town is currently in the process of standardizing and updating their sanitary sewer materials. And, uh, so we just like to, uh, we'd like to address that in the final, in the final plan set that's provided to, uh, the town for signature. And lastly, we would probably suggest a letter of credit or some form of financial surety re-provided by the applicant, um, prior to commencing work on the project, just so that you're assured that things are installed the way the approved plans have depicted them. For example, landscaping, we may want to add in some, uh, a line item there for erosion, sediment control, grading, that sort of thing. And we can work out those details with the, with the applicant's design engineer to be sure that we're satisfied with the letter of credit. Any questions for LaBella? To my knowledge, no. Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a picture of the sign if, I apparently didn't get to Michelle. I can show you guys. This with a panel underneath. All these actually shrinks. Yeah, correct. Sorry about that.
So I do have a question, Wes, and I apologize. So can you real quickly just tell me what was on the floor for... Mr. Chairman, is your microphone on, sir?
Thank you. Could you clarify what the, they got some variances, and the variances approved the placement of the building. It approved the facade, I believe. But could you clarify those?
Sure. So, um, uh, please, if the applicant couldn't correct me, um, if I'm wrong, but, uh, minimum setback from a parcel line bordering a public right-of-way, minimum setback from a parcel line bordering a private road, um, minimum front facade transparency and parking space size.
Okay. So then the extra design things you brought up are in regards to the, uh, what they call the back of the building, uh, you thought could have improvements. I just want to make sure I caught the main point out of that discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that?
Relative to the TM Drive side, I, I think the, uh, the elevations we first brought to this board were single color, single material along TM Drive without any breakup at all. And, um, the, uh, the revised or changed is multiple colors, two colors, two different materials. And, um, I think that that lends itself, especially as traffic is going eastbound, uh, with a very limited view corridor to that side. Yes, TM Drive is a public, uh, road, but we really have four frontages on this building. And that, that is kind of the back of our building, understanding that it fronts on a dedicated road that is not used for through traffic, is for access to adjacent parcels. And, uh, I think we've done what we can within the parameters of national, uh, branding or prototypes, if you will, to try to, uh, break that up in a way that's visually not a long blank wall. Um, a, and so that's what we, we prepared to try to address that.
Okay. And then you said, was there additional landscaping? That's what I was trying to understand. Are you adding additional landscape or it's already there?
The area that we, there's landscaping already on the Applebee's. Our plan does have some trees along the rear of that parcel as well. We're going to look at potentially adding some shrubs to the north parking lot. That's the area that we're looking to add to.
All right. Does the board have any questions on that, comments? So my recollection is we were okay with the placement of the building. We asked for some additional on the front, which I think you addressed.
Yeah, I think Ellen wanted more additional glass on the, uh, rear of the building, but I'm, I'm okay either way.
Okay. And then this, this other side, does that concern us as much?
Yeah.
Are we okay with the attempts that they took? It sounds like you listened and you did the best you could with what you put forward, is what I'm trying to get at. Okay. I'm good then. All right. I just wanted to make sure. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Bernie, we, we've drafted, um, depending on whether or not you're ready, we've drafted parts two and three of the seeker EAF.
I was just going to go there.
Okay. We can hand that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to go over this with you?
Yes, please.
Okay. So part two, so I've, uh, obviously before you take action on, on a site plan application, we've got to complete the seeker, uh, environmental assessment form in the process. Part two, this, we've drafted this for your consideration. Um, I'll just go through each, one of these questions quickly. And so there's two columns on the right-hand side of part two. One is, one column indicates no or small impact may occur, and the other column is moderate to large impact may occur. Okay? So if there's a, if there's a no or small impact, there's likely not to be a significant adverse, the potential for an adverse impact. If we say moderate to large, that doesn't necessarily mean that there is a significant or potentially significant adverse environmental impact. It's just identifying that it's, it's moderate to large and, and may warrant some further discussion. So number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? We've indicated here, um, if you're in concurrence, moderate to large impact, we would probably feel that it's, it's a little more moderate than, than it would be large. And that's just, uh, when we're, we identified it as moderate when we were comparing the land use regulation, I think it was, uh, what section are we in here?
I'll also add, oh, sorry. That, um, uh, when reviewing the, uh, EAF forms, that the Department of Environmental Conservation, um, they provide sort of criteria to go through. And in terms of, um, talking about if something has a material conflict with a land use plan or zoning regulations, if a proposed action requires either a use variance or multiple area variances, um, there's a potential that a project has a material conflict. And so since, um, this project in part required, um, four different area variances in order to come into compliance, um, that's something that contributes to that.
And just for clarity, are, are we looking at this as an unlisted action?
It is.
Yes. Thank you. So, uh, we've kind of compared the existing land use regulations with the comp plan and, and the, the transportation plan. And, uh, for a moderate impact, these are impacts that are moderate in magnitude and that have more impact on the environmental resources. Moderate impacts can also occur when the impact affects a larger part of the parcel or even a small area extending just beyond the parcel. Moderate environmental impacts may be either isolated only in one location or of regional concern. They generally are longer lasting, moderate in duration in weeks or several months, are largely reversible and can be... are largely reversible, and can be readily addressed through mitigation measures or project changes, such as, you know, the reasoned elaboration for the placement of the building, breaking up the facade the way they have with their architectural renderings and the vegetation and foliage that they're proposing, as well as the existing conditions. Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land use? We've indicated no or small impact. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact. Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? We've said no or small impact. Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact may occur. Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Both of those we've indicated as no or small impact. Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? We've said no or small impact. Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No or small impact. Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small impact. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No to small impact. And so then we've also drafted part three, some narrative there that kind of speaks to why we answered the way we did for your consideration. And then we've drafted, we've put a checkbox in the determination of significance suggesting that this could potentially be a negative declaration, but we leave that to your assessment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? We do have, this is a public hearing, correct? Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. If you don't mind taking a quick seat, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to this project, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. Board have any comments, questions? I'm ready to move to motion. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion on SEER in regards to PB 2023-05-5. It's an unlisted action. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry? Oh, neg, neg, declaration also. Who seconded that? Was that you, Mr. Burke? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four aye, zero nay, zero abstain, two absent, one vacant. Okay. Are we ready to move forward with the motion? And this would be for preliminary and final site plan approval and signage, I believe, correct? Even though it's not listed, I'm asking for a clarification there.
Yeah, so the sign, sign package is part of the site plan. So, if you were to make a, if you were to approve the site plan, whether it's conditional or otherwise, that would include the proposed signage.
Okay. So, we don't have to call it out, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
All right. On public hearing case number PB 2023-0505, Marathon Engineering for the preliminary and final site plan approval, make a motion with the conditions of the June 26th letter 2023 from Labella to be satisfied and worked out with Marathon.
State that condition again, I'm sorry?
That the Labella letter dated June 26th, 2023 is satisfied.
So, I gotta ask one question on that condition. So, we clarified we were okay with the facade, we were okay with the back of the building.
We were talking stormwater, the little things we were talking about working out with Labella versus Marathon.
So, I just want clarity there, so.
Sure. I'll also add that when we discussed the design criteria, I believe for most of those comments, at the end, we said that we defer to the planning board. And it is our understanding that the architecture, placement, et cetera, of this application is what the board would like to see. So, we'll stay in line with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oh, also, I'll just add, sorry. Do you, the board did speak of the quick service restaurant. We'll come back for all planning board approvals. I had that in the notes.
Quick service restaurant is required to come back for all approvals?
Yep.
Any other conditions? Seeing none, I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's four ayes, two absents, and one vacant. Thank you. What success on your project?
Angelo Gracia, developer of Skyview, I thank you very much for your approval this evening. It's the next very big step in redeveloping the overall project, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Onward and forward. Okay?
Thank you for what you're doing too.
Can I ask a general question? Do you have a cap on how late you run?
No, ma'am.
So, you do all the items on the list?
Yeah, but, yeah. Thank you. So.
Next case on the agenda, I'm sorry.
No, I'll just add that I don't believe that we have any code language that indicates that. However, we do on the website say that this board closes all items at 11:00 PM and that anything that is held is brought to the next future meeting. But there, like I said, there's no code language for that.
We'll get there. Okay.
Next case on the agenda is case number, public hearing PB 2023-06-1, request by Cap Savvy Properties LLC acting as agent for 4468 Culver Road LLC for preliminary final site plan approval for a change in use and to reconfigure existing parking on premises 4460 and 4468 Culver Road in a C business district.
Hello, my name is Jonna Morgan, and my boss owns both 4460 and 4468 Culver. They're two separate buildings. And he also owns both of the LLC companies listed here. Two weeks ago at the workshop, we, there was a problem with our parking going into the right-of-way. My boss is, we've already reached out to our paving company, and they're gonna correct that mistake with the last three spots on the end that go into the right-of-way with the curb cutout. And I, the lighting, the lighting was an issue. We have two seven-inch, 40-watt, 3,000 Kelvin LED lights that illuminate just our doors on 4468. We don't have any lights on 4460. And there's just a, there's a two-foot, the light illuminates two feet beyond the door, so it doesn't even reach Culver or Breeze Way. And the landscaping around 4460, there's a three-foot border around the entire building, except for the front door. And at 4468, we have a backyard, which is about 10 feet by 40 feet. And on the side of the house, it's just grass shared with, well, just grass. And Culver is just the two parking spots. Culver Road has those two parking spots. And that's it.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, does the town have any questions for the applicant? Labella, any questions?
Not, not any questions per se, but I can't remember if we had sort of discussed how this case came before the board at the, at the workshop or not, but it sort of is coming before the board sort of on a technicality. It's a change of use. Previously, I believe there was some sort of office use, and they wanna put a barber shop in that space because there is a change of use that triggers a site plan application and review. However, nothing on the site is actually being altered. It is sort of what's existing. And so I think one of the large sticking points, especially also conferring with the Commissioner of Public Works, is not having parking within the public right-of-way, but it sounds like the applicant is amenable to resolving that issue. I would ask that, you know, you may wanna see some of these things, you may want to hold this application, but if you decide you are gonna move forward, I would suggest having a condition where the two properties have some sort of access agreement. I know that both properties are owned by the same person now, but in the future, just because those parking spaces are shared amongst all of the uses that are there. Also, I believe that there might be a little bit more work for town staff to determine what is the required parking for that site, just to ensure that the current site meets the parking requirements. And if not, that a area variance needs to be obtained. And then there are, you know, some more sort of technical aspects. But like I said, it can be sort of difficult when somebody's here more on a technicality versus they're not coming with any improvements to the site, they're not changing anything on the site. And so I guess that's just sort of a summary, and if there are any additional questions.
Actually, I do have an additional question.
Yeah.
And this is based on historical. We have a, without naming the name, the business name came with hand drawings before, which later caused problems because the person change was on the site. Are we okay with the hand drawings from the town, or are we?
I don't, are they hand drawings?
No.
Let's see interior, to build the interior.
We had a surveyor.
Just the interior, the site.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not actually looking at it. You're saying the interior? So, the planning board, we're not looking at anything interior to the site. So, that would be an issue for Buildings Department moving forward, but.
Thanks for that clarification.
Sure, but absolutely. We've had other items even tonight that have come in with things, and we've said we need to see it on the actual plan. So, if there's anything on the actual site you'd like to see, that should be a condition, for sure. Okay.
So, you didn't actually write anything out for this, correct?
Oh, we did.
So, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. I understand.
I'm missing that, but I do remember seeing the note from Department of Public Works. So, I have obviously misplaced it.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I remember seeing this. That's why I couldn't find it. So, you've, the letter is dated today. Have you had a chance to review the letter?
No.
Okay. So, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. They're agreeing to make the changes. So, are we okay moving forward with approval conditioned by the staff, the town staff, ensure that the Labella comments are? I just wanted to see a feeling from the board. Okay. It's unusual. Normally, you would have had a chance to review it and comment it, so apologize for that. But it's pretty straightforward, and you're willing to make the required changes that you know.
Absolutely.
So, having said that. Oh, yes, thank you. So, if you mind sitting down, oh, you have anything else you wanna say before you sit down?
No.
Okay. You might be right back up. So, I'm gonna open this up for a public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to this case, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Going once, going twice. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay. Come on back up. Sorry, I'm just gonna check the batteries. I apologize. We're in our second row of batteries now. Okay. Okay, so, having said that, any other questions for the applicant? Anything else last you wanna state?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, is this a type two, just for clarity? Thank you. So, in regards to case number, oh, I don't have to make a motion for that. Entertained a motion? Okay, John, go ahead. Just get my records here. Okay. So, regarding case number PB 2023-06-1, regarding the application of Cap Savvy Properties LLC acting as agent for 4468 Culver Road LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval, I recommend to approve this application with a condition that the applicant address all the comments and the Labella letter dated June 26th, 2023.
Can, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but just to clarify, so our comment number three about the access agreement, the way that we phrased that, we said we suggest that an access agreement be executed between these two properties. If that is something that you would like as a, is that something you'd like as a condition?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I do have a comment about that. I did reach out to the county executive, Monroe County Executive about that, and he said that he would have to look back into his records 50 to 100 years to see if there was an original parking agreement between the two buildings. And it's going to take a lot of time to do so.
So, you don't, I don't think you necessarily have to look in the records for an old one. I think that potentially, I mean, we can further discuss, but I think you can create a new one between the two properties. I don't think you necessarily have to go back and find a pre-existing one. Okay. Okay.
So, Kate, should I modify that then, in terms of condition three, that we require a cross-access agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So, modify item number three in the Labella letter that the applicant shall provide a cross-access agreement between the two properties.
So, I wrote that as number three, cross-access agreement required. That's good. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstains. We have two absent and one vacant. Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
On the next steps.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for case number PB 2023-06-2, request by DH Lewis Engineering PLLC acting as agent for 1944 Titus Avenue LLC for subdivision approval and steep slope environmental protection overlay district permit to subdivide a 3.763 acre parcel into three lots on premises 1944 Titus Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Don Lewis. I'm with DH Lewis Engineering. I reside at 3832 Cory Corners Road in Mary in New York. And I'm here with Ken Boer, one of the applicants for the agenda item. We had previously been to the workshop meeting two weeks ago and had received comments from the Conservation Board as well in regards to the property. And we did receive comments earlier today from Labella, Labella Associates. It would be our first round of comments from them. So, how would you like me to proceed as far as discussing these, these comments?
Just give a high-level overview of what you plan to do.
Okay.
And then basically address the comments that you wanna address.
Sure. Okay. I can, I can start with the, my responses to the Conservation Board comments.
Sure.
They had indicated, we are before the board for a steep slope EPod disturbance permit. So, in my, in my response back to. Um, so in my, in my, uh, response back to their comments, um, the woodlot, it, it was stated that the property is within the woodlot EPod 3 district, which it is not according to the mapping, uh, of the town. Um, so I addressed that comment, um, appropriately. Um, and then there is also a comment about a, a water course protection EPod, uh, 5, which does show a thread going up into the property. Um, again, my, my response to that would be to the extent of where they show this EPod or they show this steep or, uh, stream corridor coming up into the property, this line that, that is on the map, on the town's map is up into a, a flat area that is all the way up to Titus Avenue, which just the topography doesn't justify where it is. Um, the one lot that comes off of Halver and Cove, there could be some question in regards to that and that, that would also be addressed, um, in the steep slope, uh, discussion as well on this project. Um, their second comment was asking, uh, about a federal wetland that is on the, that they're asking whether there was a federal wetland on the actual property itself. Again, the wetland mapper at, on the Corps of Engineers site shows a corridor thread that ends in dispute to where this property, uh, goes to the north. There's a triangular piece that goes to the north, this thread that comes from the corps' mapping show, ends at our property line. So it's a dispute whether it is actually on the property or not. Um, but the development that we're proposing is more than 300 feet away from that location anyway. There are no wetlands, actual fed wetlands on the map or on the property. So as to whether we would need to do a delineation or not, um, I, I would say you wouldn't only because we're, we're not doing any disturbance within this 320 feet of this location anyway, uh, despite that there's no actual wetlands on the property. Federal wetlands. Other comment three had to do with state wetlands and again, looking at the state wetland mapper, we're even greater distance than the 320 feet. Uh, the closest wetland on the state map is 600 feet. Um, comment four again addresses almost what comment two does about the federal wetland mapping. Um, number five, um, we're back to the woodland, the, the woodlot EPod question. Um, when we came to this board, uh, not quite a, not quite a year ago, we came with a concept, uh, plan showing our steep slope disturbance, what we, what we assumed from the GIS mapping at the county, um, and whether we would move forward with this project or not in regards to the lot that comes off the end of Halver and Cove, which is the one really in question here on this, on this application. Um, so we had hired a licensed, uh, landscape architect to walk the lot with us to do an actual tree inventory and found out that a lot of the trees out there that are on the, on the property are, are garbage trees or damaged trees. Um, there are some trees that will have to be taken down in order to do the, the development on lot one or the lot that comes off of Halver and Cove, um, just because we are in a wooded area, but, um, again, a lot of the trees that were, we showed on our plan that are going to be removed aren't of significant quality. And, uh, the last one was about, um, about the disturbance and the requirements of us, uh, an actual SWIP, a post-construction SWIP on the project, which is not required on a project that's, uh, does not breach the threshold of five lots or five total acres of disturbance, so. That was the Conservation Board comments. Um, I did receive comments, like I said, from Lobella Associates from West today. Um, most of these are really technical in nature. Um, has to do with, uh, this, the, the bar scales that we had in our plans were incorrect, which, uh, comment one and two, uh, can be easily addressed. Um, comment three has to do with, uh, Halver and Cove lot again, lot one and dealing with some drainage there and the way I had designed that culvert, it does go, it does breach the town's right-of-way, um, which again, with some creative drainage, I could swing that pipe so it's outside and it would be owned and maintained by the owner. Um, it's just the way I, the way I designed it and the way I showed it did, did some, did less disturbance on the property. So if, if that needs to be swung the other way, it just means I, I have to do a little more grading in there to make that all work. Uh, the next two comments had to do with signature blocks in the plans. Um, site distance was another comment that came up with the DOT. Uh, John Raymond just wants to make sure that we have proper site distance there. Um, driven the property several times and wait on the two meetings, the last two meetings here and a lot of the site distance issue coming from, coming west from Culver Road is a vegetation problem. The first, just as you go off to, I think it's Briar, Briar's the, the road to the right there. If we end up taking down some vegetation, vegetation there, you'll see the house that's on the, on the west side of the whole project, so. And then coming back the other way, you can see everything, so we're, we're, we're going to measure the site distances. Our surveyor's going to go out there and put those on the plans and that'll satisfy, satisfies Wes comment, Wes's comments and the county's comments. Um, the cleanout spacing, we can handle that easily as well. Area disturbance, I can go through that with, with, uh, with Wes on the, uh, what's required as far as the, anything to do with the, uh, sensitivity of the 303 watershed and then, uh, just changing how we're going to handle the, the roof and basement drainage is another easy issue, so. With that, I open up for any questions and comments.
So I guess my first question is, do we have anybody from the Conservation Board here tonight?
Oh, there's Jack. I didn't see him back there.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road, Conservation Board. Um, we were, uh, we were not aware that a tree inventory had been done, but we're worried about those large trees at the north part of the property and we'd like to see what has to get removed out of the large, um, good quality trees. We were not worried about the low quality at the south part of the lot. As for the mapping, uh, in an item one, reference to the town map is not sufficient. Uh, we do think the thing ought to be looked at as a, a potential wetland, but that's your call. Thank you.
I, I do have a question.
For the, for the Conservation Board? Uh, Jack, could you please come back? I'm sorry.
In looking at the, uh, New York, the National Wetland Map, it appears that the ravines, um, sorry, over here, it, it appears that the ravines could write down this property. So like in case of a flooding, looking at gone down for erosion, what is your opinion on, on what are the architectural feature they need to?
Well, he indicated he was going to be so far away from that it doesn't count and if that's true, we're good with it.
It looks like the stream ends north of Glen Cove, but then if you look at the, the spurs, it, it continues, if there's any water, it will continue down this property.
And a, a town staff member has walked the property and he felt that the bot, that the north end of the property does indeed have wetland properties, so, um, we are only advisory, we're not deciding.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant come, come back up. You can come back to the podium. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Any questions from the board members? I was going to ask the...
Yeah, my, my, my concern is looking at the sloping of, of where it's at and you indicated that you, that you're going to be looking at the, um, drainage of the basements, et cetera. So my concern is that you're building three lots, um, what we're going to military call a ravine or a spur, which, which collects water. Um, as, as we increase in hydrology, uh, as the temperature increase, I'm looking at the three properties maybe having, uh, foundation damage or other type of structural damage in the future. What are you going to do to mitigate that? So I don't think that you're at the end. I think you're in the middle of, or, or the end of a wetland. I think that's going to be extended out because you're, you're a downslope.
As far, as far as construction of the, the, the future, the proposed buildings, those have to be, uh, designed per town building code. Uh, foundations will be placed on native soils, virgin ground native soils, um, not on fill at all, even, even in the, even in the, the property that has the, even in property that has a swale, a lot one off of Halver and Cove, that, that foundation, even, even if, uh, you had an eight-foot basement, you would have to go down to virgin ground to make sure that your footing sat on ex, unexcavated soils. That's, that's a requirement of, of the town building code.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
So, did you get the comments that were submitted last Friday from former resident of Huntington Hills?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you have any comments on those comments?
No.
No comments?
Pretty much addressed in the responses to the Conservation Board. Same, same idea.
So, town comment on, uh...
Yeah, I can comment. Is this on? I think it's on. Wes Petty, Lobella Associates, uh, one of our largest concerns might be, uh, comment number three in Lobella's letter dated June 26, 2023, which the applicant has acknowledged and id, and identified. And really it has to do with the access to lot one at the, at the end of Halver and Cove in the right-of-way and we just want to have the town's, um, DPW Commissioner comment on, you know, future roadway maintenance and seasonal roadway maintenance and where they might anticipate putting snow. I don't know if today, I didn't have any opportunity to ask today how they, uh, deal with snow at the end of that roadway. Maybe they just put it right to the end. Uh, so we need, we need them to look at that, comment on it and then also any of the infrastructure that's in the, in the right-of-way, we want them to look at as well. Maybe, maybe there's just some coordination as the applicant has indicated in terms of, you know, a small redesign, that sort of thing. Uh, we also looked at the Environmental Resource Mapper, the New York State DEC Wetlands Mapper. There are no DEC wetlands on the project parcel. We looked at the NWI Wetland Mapper as well. Uh, and yes, the very, the very end terminus of a, uh, stream wetland is located at the very northern tip of this project parcel. I'm not so sure that the proposed development is going to impact that wetland. Uh, based on looking at the grading, the existing grades, um, it, it doesn't appear that any impact would, would likely occur, but I will have our, uh, environmental, uh, people in our office take a second look just to confirm, uh, because I know that's, that's an element of, um, that you guys want to get right. You don't, you don't want to have some development happen that's going to adversely impact the wetland. So, uh, let me have an environmental person take a look at that just to confirm that my...
My, my question is kind of the reverse. Will the, will the wetlands or the growth of the wetlands as we get warmer and wetter affect the development? That, that, that's my, that's my question. So I'm, I'm looking at the reverse question.
I, based on my preliminary look at the, the, uh, the plans, the subdivision plans that were submitted, I don't think, I don't believe even if there, there are any growth of the wetlands. I don't think that would impact the foundations of where these buildings are.
I think the grade, the grade over that 300 foot drops off quite a bit. I mean, to grow back up, uphill at that grade.
Your, your structures are uphill of where the wetlands are.
Quite a ways, quite a ways.
Yeah. Yep. So, um, yeah, there's a number of technical items, uh, generally pretty minor. We'll follow up with the applicant on the, um, the area of disturbance is, is greater than an acre. Uh, we just need to check, just to check if we're in a 303D watershed, which might require additional stormwater control measures, but, um, yeah, we'll be, we'll probably be doing some work offline.
Okay.
And, and in any event, I don't think, I, I don't think we're in a position where we would want the planning board to act on this, this application tonight.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
So, so we still need that information before we can move forward.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to get some input from the DPW Commissioner. I, uh, I kind of wish we had had, had the opportunity to, to reach out, uh, sooner, but, uh, but we just haven't had that yet, so we'll do that shortly.
And then you said an environmental review?
Yep, I'll have, I'm going to have our environmental person take a look at the, the wetlands map and identify whether or not there's a, there's a need to do a delineation on the property.
And then we can't do seeker until we know all that also, correct?
Correct.
So, okay. So is the applicant okay that we're going to table this until we get that information?
Yeah, I can get you, I can get back comments. We can have an open discussion about that, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So in regards to PB 2023-06-2, uh, make the motion that we table this. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have two absent and one vacant. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you for it.
Excuse me. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm, my name's Andy Nye. I live at 55 Briar Lane. I'm the only one that, I'm, I live at 55 Briar Lane.
One second. So we didn't do a public hearing?
No, but I'm the one that knows that land. That's a wetland.
I can open the public hearing and keep it open if that's okay. So let me, just let me formally open the public hearing. Thank you for the reminder. You can stay there. Thank you. Open the public hearing.
I'm going to save you, I'm going to save you some money. That's so what? You're never going to get equipment down in there.
Please address to the...
Okay. Um, I own that ravine. That is my stream that comes out and runs down. It runs all the way to the wetland. It does not...
I'm sorry, sir. Sir, could you repeat your name and your address for the record? Sorry.
Andy Nye, 55 Briar Lane. So that's my pie shape where the water comes out. That's a stream that runs out of that hill. The ravine's like this and it channels all that water down to Durant Eastman. I walk that park all the time. Um, it's, it's a problem. You know, the trees aren't a problem down in there. There's ones that fall down. You're going to have to remove them all. But if he, if they go, unless it's just that flat land, because I haven't seen the plans, unless it's just that flat land on Titus, you start to go down that hill, you're going to interrupt all that.
So you can, you can request the plans. I just want to point that out.
Oh, I, I just found out today when I walked my dog, there was a hearing tonight.
Okay.
And I, I don't know how, if that's just that flat land, how you're going to get three houses on it. It's not an acre.
Okay.
On Briar or on the empty spot on Titus. You can look and tell you can't get three houses on there.
Okay. Any other comments regarding?
I just, I, I think it's going to be a bad project. That's all.
Anybody else who wants to address the board?
Just for the record, the project parcel is 3.82 acres.
Yeah, but...
Yep. Person that got their hand, you can come to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Rand Rigby, 38 Glen Hollow. My concerns with the project at 1944 Titus Avenue. Two curb cuts on Titus Avenue is a disaster waiting to happen. Although there is a speed limit of 35 miles per hour, many drivers don't obey that speed marker. Two curb cuts are to be made on a blind curve just west of Briar Lane. If construction was to start, there would be a major disruption in the flow of traffic that could adversely affect fire, police and ambulance emergencies. Pedestrians, bike riders, dog walkers and people pushing baby carriages might find it difficult to move freely along the sidewalk. There is only one sidewalk on Titus Avenue and that's on the north side. There would not be an alternate sidewalk available for pedestrians. The flow of heavy equipment will cause much difficulty in movement along Titus Avenue during the project that could last eight hours a day, five days a week, for months and possibly a year. All of the above listed concerns also apply to the other portion of the proposal that would take place on Halver and Cove. My neighbors at 335 Halver and Cove would be impacted far more than Titus Avenue with major reconstruction of the road, infrastructure, tree removal, along with construction of the new home. Under stormwater runoff, this EPod needs careful consideration before any adverse changes can be made. It's a fact that in a one-inch... It's a fact that in a one-inch rainfall, 27,000 gallons of water will fall on a one-acre parcel of land. How often do you think that happens? Oh, wait. Three weeks ago today, we had 1.07 inches of rain fall on our area, and guess what? It happened again today. With the large number of trees and shrubbery, much of the water was absorbed with the overflow making its way into the creek, which flows north through the 37 acres, ending up in the wetlands along Hoffman Road, and then along the front of several homes on Hoffman Road, and finally at the end of the Spring Valley wetlands. It's easy to see that removing trees and shrubbery is only going to send more runoff to Hoffman Road and Spring Valley. Letter to the planning board. A letter dated June 23, 2023, from Mr. Tim Golin was sent to each of the planning board members, which is spot on, with an outline covering topics to be covered by the board. Hopefully, the planning board, doing their diligence, makes the correct decision regarding this proposal for the betterment of the town, the environment, the neighborhood, and its local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? I'm going to leave the, the public hearing open, I'm not going to close it tonight. And just for logistics sake, we did make a motion to table this by myself, seconded by Mr. Evans, looking for input from the DPW, and then a full environmental review. And I take it the input from the DPW, Wes will include the curb cuts on both streets also?
Well, Titus Avenue, I believe, is a, is a county roadway.
Okay.
So, probably less so regarding the, the Titus Ave curb cuts, but with regard to the, the lot one at the terminus of the, of the local roadway, there'll be some commentary there. But we're also looking, right, the applicant is, is addressing county DPW comments and also putting the site distances on for access to.
Okay. So, are we good, even though we went out of order there, Mr. Attorney? We went out of order, is that okay? All right, good. All right, so the public hearing's still open, we look forward to hearing the results from Lobella and yourself, and you, you are, I apologize, you can address these comments from the neighbors at this time, or you can do it another time. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next case is public hearing, case number PB 2023-06-3, request by Land Tech Planning and Surveying, acting as agent for Curtis and Shirley Gilbert for steep slope and woodlot environmental protection overlay district permits to construct a garage addition on premises 123 Van Voorhees Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's John Sharabo with Land Tech, representing the Gilbert family this evening. I know you had a long night, so I'll be quick. The Gilberts have lived at 123 Van Voorhees Avenue for over 20 years. This is a two and a half acre parcel that overlooks the Genesee River. If you've been to the site, this house does not have a garage, they have a shed, and they feel that they need a garage at this time for vehicles and storage, so we're proposing approximately 700 square foot detail, or excuse me, attached garage to the east side of the existing home. Based on the town's mapping, we have two EPods, one's a woodlot and one's a steep slope, so we prepared a topographic survey locating the existing contours, slopes, and trees. The proposed plan that we show you, the garage is to be built on the existing driveway, so any area disturbance is well away from the slope, and we're not proposing any removal of trees. Thing that's nice about this project, it is a garage, so we're not proposing any excessive cuts, so we're not digging deeply into the earth and doing anything such as that. So, we went to the workshop a couple weeks ago, explained the project as well. We received comments from the conservation board, we agree with them, and generally, they really want us to make sure that we show the stockpile of soils, which we will do, add silt fencing, which we will do, and minimize any asphalt that we can on that property. So, we'll work with the Gilberts to make sure that the need for the turnaround is kept to a minimum, so they can access the garage, and we hope that you approve this EPod permit request tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sharabo. Any comments from the board? Any comments from Lobella? This is a public hearing, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Sharabo, please grab a quick seat. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address this one, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, is this a type two? So, in regards to PB 2023-06-3, this is a type two action, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve case number PB 2023-0603, Land Tech Planning and Surveying, acting as an agent for Curtis and Shirley Gilbert for steep slope and woodlot environmental protection overlay district permits for 123 Van Voorhees Avenue. No conditions? I'll second that. All those in favor, please say, oh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four aye, no nays, no abstains, two absence, one vacant. Thank you, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number, public hearing PB 2023-06-4, request by Land Tech Planning and Surveying, acting as agent for Mike and Patty Cook for subdivision approval to subdivide a 5.3 plus or minus acre parcel into three lots on premises 193 St. Joseph Street in an RR resident, rural residential district.
Good evening again, this is John Sharabo, representing the Cook family regarding this application. This parcel is located down in the flats at the corner of St. Joseph and Seneca Park Avenue. There's an existing single-family structure, or excuse me, home at 193 St. Joseph. The plan that you see before you is a subdivision, we're going to put that existing single-family home on its own one-acre lot. That lot meets the code requirements of one acre, and then we're proposing a building lot, which is noted as lot three. This is, again, a one-acre lot, we did get relief for the depth of the lot from the zoning board earlier this year due to the lot configuration of the existing structure, so it meets the width and the area, but didn't have the depth. So, we did get a variance for that, and the remaining parcel of land will remain vacant as is. As I mentioned in my presentation, lot three is proposed for development, we're proposing one single-family home for one of the members of the Cook family. That home would be serviced by gas, electric, public water that runs down North Park Avenue, and we are proposing to extend dedicated public sewer. If the board's familiar with this area, Totem Trail has sanitary sewer, there's a stub located about 100 feet into the subdivision, we're proposing to extend that northerly to the corner, and then westerly along the north side of Seneca Park Avenue. I did meet with the sewer department on site, we walked it, everything looks in order. The plans that we provided shows the town details, we showed related grading for the home, and the, I think, talking to Wes at the workshop, one of the things that they want is the, we'll post a letter of credit for the sewer that will be built to town standards and dedicated back to the town of Runnacoit. Other than that, then I can answer any questions you have.
Board have any questions?
I just had a note from the workshop that Lobella was going to provide comments, I didn't get anything today, and if there was anything.
Yeah, that's a good call. No, we didn't, we weren't able to provide comments on this application, but I, one of the main concerns that we had John brought up was with regard to the letter of credit for the sanitary sewer, if he's met with the sewer department, that, that makes us happy as town engineer. I do have a question for the applicant, there's a water service, it looks like there's two water services, or maybe one goes beyond this lot three.
Yeah, there is no public water on that Seneca Park Avenue extension, so those are private services that are metered at the corner and run to those houses on the south park.
All right.
You know, I know that actually someone just, well, my survey crew was there, just replaced one of those services, so we're proposing another meter and service for this home.
Okay. And then I see a proposed 20-foot wide water service easement to lot three from, okay.
That's going to be from the private owner to the north, so I can get it, I want, I need the separation from the sanitary.
Yep, understood, understood. Okay. That's, that's it for me right now. Yep.
So, just since we did not get the recommendations in writing, is there anything we would have to call out in a condition, or do you feel they've all been addressed?
Just, I would add the condition that the, that the applicant provide a letter of credit to the satisfaction of the town engineer and the town attorney for the sanitary sewer.
Is that an issue?
No, no problem.
You said town attorney and?
To the satisfaction of the town engineer and town attorney.
Okay. There is public hearing, so if you don't mind, we might be right back. Open this up for any public comment regarding this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any final comments? Okay, I think we'll move forward. This is a type two?
This would be, this would be unlisted.
Unlisted?
Yep.
So, if it's unlisted, then we need a full seeker?
I need to do part two and three of the EAF. We could, we can do that here. Where am I? Do you have a copy? There we go, perfect. So, part two of the EAF, I know you don't have a copy in front of you, but it's very similar to the one that we did for all these, it's the same form. Do you want me to go down and read those?
Just so you know, I'm going to need one I have to sign tonight, too.
11 questions? Yep, we'll, we'll provide that to you. Yep. So, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an, an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No or small impact? All of these are going to be no or small impact may occur. So, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No or small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation for renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character of the quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, Florida or fauna? No or small impact. Will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small impact. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact.
So, is the board okay moving forward even? Okay. So, was there any conservation board comments on this one? No?
This isn't, this project is not within an EPod.
Okay, thank you. All right, in regards to case number PB 2023-06-4, it's an unlisted action, negative declaration, paperwork to follow, I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's four aye, zero nay, zero abstain, two absent, one vacant. I'll entertain a motion. In regards to PB 2023-06-4, request by Land Tech, acting as the agent for Mike and Patty Cook for subdivision approval. Move forward as, as presented. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
That was final subdivision. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four aye, zero nay, zero abstain, two absence, one vacant, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Can we take a two-minute break?
I agree.
Thank you. Next item on, on the agenda, please, Michelle?
Public hearing case number PB twenty twenty three dash oh four dash one, request by Nichols Construction Team acting as agent for University Preparatory Charter School for Young Men for preliminary site plan approval for the redevelopment of an existing building to include a new fifteen thousand four hundred thirty eight plus or minus square foot building addition on, and a non-regulation sized field, track and field on premises three thousand East Ridge Road in an R one residential district.
Good evening, board members and town staff and neighbors. Um, I'm joined, my name is John Nichols, Nichols Construction Team, seventy five High Power Road in Rochester, here representing the project. I'm joined by my colleagues and by representatives from University Prep. A couple of weeks ago, we were here at a workshop meeting. Uh, questions were raised, there were three notable issues, and we've been working over the past two weeks to, uh, address those. We submitted supplement, supplemental information on Friday, which I'm sure you do have in front of you tonight. And, uh, so we're here to discuss those points and any other that are raised. Um, I'm gonna let Alex Ammering from Costage Engineers come up and walk through those, unless there's another way you'd like to approach this.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh, Alex Ammering with Costage Engineering Offices at two seventeen Lake Ave, Rochester, New York. Um, as John mentioned, uh, we walked through quite a few materials at the last meeting, um, which were generated at the previous, uh, workshop, um, or the previous public hearing, I should say. Um, I think those were generally well received. It did lead, lead to some additional, uh, dialogue, which was great. And as John mentioned, we kind of ironed out three items that the board was really looking for follow up on. First being the traffic study. Um, the board was interested in what Monroe County DOT and New York State DOT had to say about that. Um, it was sent to county DOT, I believe county DOT reached out to town staff. Um, their primary concern that they kind of came right out and saying is, um, the Culver Road one oh four entrance. Uh, if you're familiar, you can get on five ninety north and south, uh, from, from Ridge Road. Um, but we, we did talk with the U Prep staff and, you know, they essentially have some ability to work on routes and, uh, the county DOT was pretty encouraged by that, so. Um, the second being, there was a question about the new building addition roof height, potentials for mechanical equipment on that. Um, we have submitted, similar to what we presented to the board a couple of weeks ago, a cross section, but what we did is we also showed rooftop equipment and a sample adjoining residential property. Uh, so you can see those sightlines on there. Um, the third item, I think it's the town consulting engineer's suggestion, was some documentation regarding noise. Uh, we submitted a summary document that went through a bunch of local, state, federal guidelines, recommendations, um, that type of thing. Uh, we included in that typical levels for single family residential, highways, collector roads, and also others, some discussion on other uses that are allowed in the single family district. Um, there are, there is a church around there, there's some higher density residential. Um, and then kind of got into, uh, the operation of U Prep itself and how we believe it's consistent with, um, some of the guidelines. Um, I think at this point, uh, digging into anything else would probably be kind of regurgitating some information that's already been discussed, so. Be happy to open it up.
Board members have questions? So I have a couple and some of them might be catch up, so. Where are we with the, is there a setback variance that you have to still go for?
Yeah, well, beyond, I think it's the July tenth agenda.
Okay, so you're going for a variance, you're not gonna alter the site plan as it is right now?
It's an existing building, and I think at this point, uh, altering the building would be fairly cost prohibitive to the project.
Okay, and then regarding the traffic study, if I'm reading everything correctly, it needs to be redone. Am I understanding that correctly, or do you have a different opinion of that?
I think there was gonna be some edits is, was reviewed by, uh, Passaro and the DOT. Um, they did a, issue a supplemental document, which I think went to the town also. One, one item we realized after the last meeting was their model assumed that all staff members left at the same time, and that's not the case. There's essentially the initial release that coincides with the students leaving, but there are quite a few staff that stick around, um, which I believe led to about a twelve second difference in, um...
Mr. Chairman, my name's Frank Pavia, I'm with the law firm of Harris Beach, ninety nine Gunsy Road, on behalf of the applicant. There was, Passaro did prepare a supplement dated June twentieth, it was addressed to you, Mr. Chairman. And it addresses the fact that our, uh, the applicant had the original assumptions that were made by the traffic consultant was that the entire eighty five member staff would stay after school, when in fact, that was, uh, not the case. That only approximately thirty staff members stay on site, uh, thus a reduction of fifty five people. So the traffic consultant through Passaro did, redid, uh, did a supplement analysis to show that in fact it was a twelve point five second reduction in the delay, and that all of the levels of services were within the acceptable ranges for both the county and the New York State DOT requirement. So that was, uh, a supplement that was again addressed to you, Mr. Chairman, and submitted as part of the record.
We all have that up here.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's a need for the original study to be redone, I think the supplement is just an add on.
Uh, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Frank Pavia.
Uh, Mr. Pavia, so what I'm looking at is a letter dated after that, June twenty second, and discussing the bus traffic, that, you know, the traffic study was done, uh, using, you know, they would have to use the Culver Road exit, but it was already a bad bottleneck, so, you know, he goes on to say that they would need to revise the traffic study to include Culver Road and one oh four, Culver Road and East Ridge Road, and East Ridge Road and the high school. So, um...
Well, if that's the case, we will definitely revise it and provide it to the board. I, we were under the impression that in fact there was a, a, a change in operations that would, uh, reduce the need for one oh four versus, uh, the other routes. But if there, if that revision needs to be made, it will be made and submitted to the board, absolutely.
Okay. Did I misread that, Michelle, I just wanna make sure. We got the revi, we got that one from June twentieth, but then on June twenty second, we got the letter from Mr. Raymond from the Monroe County Department of Transportation.
Yeah, the supplemental flat outside says that they did not analyze.
Right, so, so it's not, we don't have...
Yeah, that's at the point where Passaro went back to U Prep and said, is it essential that you use the Culver Road entrance onto one oh four? And it's not.
How are they gonna, how are they gonna get around it?
The, there's other entrances onto one oh four, I mean, it might be the shortest route, but it doesn't have to be.
Incoming, incoming buses, parents, students, there's no way to get there coming from the west, unless you get off at Empire, turn around and come back to get on five ninety north.
We'll review that.
I, I live there, I have a real hard time getting off my road.
I apologize, David couldn't be here, so we're, we're trying to work on his behalf, so.
Okay. Then I do have a question on this line of sight, so, um, I'm having a hard time. Where, where would the field be in relation to this, this document?
That is the, uh, that is directly behind where the addition, the gym addition would be. So the field is not in that picture. It's a section through the house behind and the...
Thank you for providing this, what I'm trying to understand is, is if I look at this, it's trying to tell me that the sightline is flat, but I believe the...
Well, if there's one sightline, if you're standing on the ground, there's another sightline if you're in the second story, looking out a window on the second floor. I think in both cases, it demonstrates the need to screen any rooftop equipment, so, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll be doing that.
This, uh...
But that, that is actually accurate relative to the, uh, the elevations and topography.
It was actually on the property today, and that two story has no trees in front of it to the building. It's wide open to the building, so this depicts trees in front of it, which is a little misleading, actually. There's no trees in front of that, that are mature or anything, it's a wide open view, so a screening would absolutely be necessary.
There, there are trees, a sightline is drawn at one point, yeah.
There's nothing that big, I would, I think you're correct about that, so.
Okay, so have you presented anything more about how you're gonna mitigate that?
The mitigation would be with, uh, screening, the rooftop equipment with materials that's similar to the, uh, to the building, or something attractive that the, uh, that the board would accept.
Okay. So with, is there anything else still, is there anything the town's still waiting for? Lobella's still waiting for responses on? I'm just trying to gather, what, what do we have, what are we waiting for?
Sure, so, um, I don't believe Lobella is necessarily waiting on any specific information. We have a very robust draft, um, for our comments. We'll likely need to revise our traffic comments based on the now incoming revised, uh, traffic import, or traffic impact report. Um, and once we have that information, we can probably start going through seeker, um, potentially. Um, and so, uh, at this point, we don't need any additional information, but any supplemental information that's coming in may influence our comments.
Okay, so tonight, you wanted to come and ask for preliminary? Is that what you were looking for?
That's correct.
Okay, so I for one don't feel I have enough information to move on preliminary at this point, I'm sorry?
We, we haven't, we don't have seeker, so we couldn't, no, it's okay, we, so we couldn't move forward with preliminary.
What do we have and what we don't have? It's premature to consider a preliminary site plan approval at this point in time. We need to complete seeker before, uh, we get, we get there, and, um, we need to take a look at this, this noise generation summary memo that the applicant has provided, and also, uh, look at any supplemental traffic information that might be coming as a result of the New York, or as a result of the Monroe County DOT comments. Um, yeah, so we've, we've got a ways to go still, and, uh, certainly the public hearing is still open as well, but...
So I, so I guess I just wanna make sure, were you guys aware of that before you came tonight, or you just wanted clarification?
Our goal is to continue to cross off items that the board, you know, feels they need to see, so.
Did, question about the, about the noise generation summary, uh, just upon, on quick glance, did you, did anybody, um, actually record sound pressure levels out there? It is, no, okay.
Okay. So, any other questions from the board members?
Just the, the same noise study, speaking of the exterior practice field, though it's not gonna have formal games on it, it is a practice field. It's gonna utilize whistles, it's gonna utilize voices, and you're more or less telling us that there'll be no amplification on that field, and you don't consider it as a part of the study basically by this comment on here, so. I mean, I'm not, and that, that sports field in no way should even be on the site plan, in my opinion, because it cannot be mitigated sound enough to not interfere with the neighborhood. It just can't. The quality of life is gonna be heavily affected by that field.
So let me, I got another question for you, so, um, in looking back over all the notes, okay? Um, there's a discussion of the ex, that you're gonna create another curb cut, and I'm still waiting for clarification, into the parking lot for the buses and everything, for the traffic flow, correct? You're gonna put one at the, what direction is that? West, west end, you're gonna add an entrance into the parking lot, correct?
Compared to the current plan?
Yes, well, they changed the bus routing to go in the west or in the east and then come out the west.
Covered last meeting a little, from an operational standpoint, they changed where the buses would drop off, so they don't use the loop itself. It's kind of at the vestibule.
Could you turn this a little bit more this way so you can point it out to, thank you.
Before the buses came in, went through the loop, we received a lot of concerns over how this parking would be utilized. The fire marshal also stated this point was his primary point to fight fires. We worked with U Prep to use this vestibule for pickup, drop off. So it doesn't change the curb cuts, it changes the operations.
But today, there's only one entrance into that parking lot, you're adding an entrance, correct?
There's two curb cuts today, we're removing one curb cut, adding one curb cut.
Further to the west, right?
Yeah, the one previously went in kind of closest to the HOA property.
So my question is, and I think my question is also to the town, is there easements involved, do we, what, what do we, what information do we need so that we know what we're looking at? I guess I'll ask the town attorney.
Yeah, I guess, i- i- we would probably just ask back to the applicant, just to sort of describe. Um, I know you have some, some drawings, and it appears there were, you know, prior grants of easement, prior deeds. Um, so just, uh, you know, a summary of sort of, you know, where, where those end, um, where Ridge Road ends, um, where, you know, where maintenance takes over, um, you know, would be helpful. Not sure, so we submitted kind of a colored version that highlighted the easements that was presented at the workshop meeting to kind of clear, make that a little clearer. Which document are you referring to? Happy to go through that again. It's titled the Survey Easement Exhibit. I believe it's page...
Is it? Okay, thank you.
Uh, sheet five or six, I believe. So we colored in green essentially where the Ridge Road right away extends to. We highlighted in yellow all the property lines. And then you'll see in a red patch is essentially the easement which follows the driveway, and it adjoins the property line for the entire length, essentially extending back into the project.
Do you have the, just the recording information of that one? Just, um, cause we were sort of looking at the other ones and we're able to, you know, pull them in, in title and see sort of their.
Yeah, I, I do see a label, I think because this was kind of blown up, might have been taken off, but at one point we did submit all the deeds also with the easements, you know, that were obviously right from the county clerks.
So the, the entrance you're adding would be off of the public right of way from East Ridge Road? Am I reading this correct?
Yeah, it's kind of off the corner there. Yep. There's been some questions about maintenance that I think need to be resolved, but that's kind of a discussion I think we'll engage with the DPW on.
So has the DPW been engaged for this? Yeah.
There's been some discussion between the Commissioner of Public Works and, um, the Deputy Town Attorney that we're still working on, I believe.
Yeah, they, they sent, she sent over some, um, some documents. Yeah, we're trying to finalize it. It, it says that, I mean, one of the easements was the town granting a private easement over what was already existing public right of way. So I'm, wasn't really sure why the town would have done that if whoever the.
Guessing because they probably didn't want to maintain it. That's usually if it serves one or two properties and it doesn't really benefit the town as a whole.
Yeah.
That's typically the dollars and cents discussion, so.
Sure. And I, I, yeah, cause I, I don't think it was, it was deeded or anything, so it must have just been, and that might be consistent with what DPW has historically done with that, but, um.
It's very non-traditional to see. An easement over a public right of way to a private entity, so yeah, I agree with that.
So you're gonna let us know?
I think in any event, I, I, I think at least what he's called out as the green portion, I do, I do think that remains a public right of way. I think it's a little bit unclear as it goes further down the road, um, to the, to the second, um, access point, um, where, where you have the color change. Um, I guess just maybe more clarity and I don't know if, um, Wes and Kate, uh, had, had any further comment there?
No further comment. I think that we need to, uh, clarify with the DPW, uh, Commissioner. Obviously, uh, Commissioner McGee understands whatever is in her jurisdiction, so, um, I think we probably need to get additional clarification from her, uh, and her understanding of how these easements work.
And when do you go before the zoning board for the?
July 10th.
Okay. So when I first asked tonight, you wanted preliminary, I think you now know we're probably not gonna be there tonight, but in the same aspect, is there any other comments, questions before I go, I reopen the public hearing? Hearing none?
I'm, I'm with Mr. Hubertic. Um, I'd seen noise, also the redo of the traffic. Um, and I'm still, I know that we don't do the interior of a building. Um, I have to get a better understanding of how they're gonna fit 600 people into the building, so that, that's my, my third concern.
Yeah, so I, I captured the noise, the supplemental traffic study information, Seeker. The parking lot entrance needs input from the DPW and the Deputy Town Attorney and Lobella, and then, um, I captured all of those. Does that capture?
If I remember from one of the workshops, the, the, I know that we don't do private easements, but how did this become a private easement from a public road or it's kind of confusing? So, you know, what, what can they do? Cause it seems like.
Yeah, that.
Seems like they can't access their property unless they.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, it's, it's, it's odd that the, there was a grant of a private easement over the public road. I think access there is, is pretty clear though, that it's, it's publicly accessible. But I think as we go into that second access point, um, just sort of, um, any, you know, the, if you guys could just provide a little more on what the, what the grant there is. Um, you know, there, i- it seems that the previous owner would have had to have some sort of access to be able to go down, um, but just a bit of, bit of clarity, um, and sort of what the scope of that was, um, would be, I think, helpful to the, to the board.
Yeah, from a historical standpoint, you know, at one point that was all one property before it was developed to facilitate the condos on Binnacle Point. So obviously as part of that, you know, easements. Leg- legal rights were granted, obviously, as part of the subdivision process and carried with all the successors, so.
Okay. Think we'll open up the public hearing? Anybody who would like to address the board, please come to the podium.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did have, um, some people call me ahead of time and sign up to speak, so I will start with that first, if that's okay?
Sure, you got the list?
I do.
The names, okay, thank you.
The first one I have is Karen Miller, 131 Valley Circle.
Good evening. You should have this in a packet provided to you. Um, this is the Greest Town Board's rationale for denial of a charter school. We submit to the record the July 16th, 2019 Greest Town Board Meeting Minutes where the school was denied moving into an existing building on Long Pond Road. Important to this ruling are many similarities to the U-Prep proposal. We assert that the Greest denial establishes a clear precedent regarding similar use proposed for this location in a Monroe County legacy residential neighborhood. This chart compares the two locations. It's gonna be tough for me, but first of all.
Do you need a microphone? Would that make it easier?
I don't know. Maybe somebody can point to it. First of all, Rochester Academy is on 751 Long Pond Road. It has ease of, ease of access through a four-lane urban minor arterial in a signalized intersection. U-Prep has a private road which is HOA-owned with no signal. The student population, we have talked about this with New York State Department of Ed requirements for land. The other one was 420 elementary students, which would, would have meant three base acres plus five for eight acres. The property had 6.6 acres, which is still a deficit. Ours, because they are older students, requires 10 base acres plus six base acres for 16. This property is 5.91 acres. It also has to be consistent with the town. In Grease, schools are typically 15 to 20 acres. In Arondacoit, they are typically 30 to 37 acres. Parking, our parking is more, um, 12 full buses, five small buses, 20 parent drop-offs. And then finally, um, there's other land use in the vicinity. In Grease, it includes single-family townhomes, retail, restaurants, YMCA's, churches. This neighborhood, single-family homes, um, townhomes, small church, and no retail or restaurants. There's rationale, and I expect you'll read it, but the Greest rationale overview says the proposed school will have an undesirable change in the essential character of the adjoining residential area and will have a detrimental effect on residents and their quiet enjoyment of their properties. The scale intensity and close proximity to nearby residents is not in harmony with and detracts from the residential character of the adjoining neighborhood. Our assertion is that the school at 3,000 East Ridge would have a detrimental effect on our quiet neighborhood as intensity of use quadruples, quadruples that of any previous occupant. Greest rationale A, scale and intensity of proposed use relative to size of the site. The 6.6 acre site is far smaller than typical elementary schools and in order to accommodate these students, the expansion leaves little room to accommodate outdoor activities. The size and shape of the effort or the site afford little distance between the site activity and adjoining residents. Our assertion, adding 525 students, which is 105 more than Grease, on a smaller piece of property than Long Pond, is neither safe nor consistent with our other town schools. Additionally, these are high school students. They're bigger, they're louder, they're participating in intramural sports with other Monroe County schools, and in some places the insufficient buffer between the proposed activity field and residence homes is less than 50 feet. Rationale B, additional intensity of use not contemplated. Questions on the town's description of proposed operation forms submitted by the applicant were left unanswered. Our position, U-Prep submitted an engineer's report form, and the copy is in your file, where the first question was, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? They answered no, which allowed them to skip over eight other essential questions. It's ludicrous for the school to subjectively assess their own effect on traffic in an area that is totally unfamiliar to them. Those skipped questions have since become questions of your concern and our concern. It asked about the number of truck trips a day. While it's not a truck fleet, there would be 20 to 25 trips a day of equally heavy buses. Question two asked about parking spaces and would, that would be sacrificed for building space, and that's raised many questions. Question five asked about modifying roads or changing access. Um, the fire marshal and the Arondacoit School District Department of Transportation have submitted letters and you should have that too. Um, East Arondacoit Deputy Superintendent John Abbott sent their head of transportation to assess access. He cited the difficulty of parent drop-off when there are buses in the lot. And this raises the possibility that parents will seek alternative ways to drop off kids, including sneaking in the back way, down a secret road like Newport, and dropping off in the back bordering Valley Circle. U-Prep's willful disregard of these important questions was absolutely and completely disingenuous. Greest rationale, proximity to nearby residents, will bring the structure 30 feet closer to adjoining residential district. A dumpster enclosure is, enclosure is proposed to be 80 feet from adjoining residential area and fa- uh, an approximate one acre playing field is proposed to be located within 60 feet. Our position, there are five touch points where the proposed school would have less than the required foots, 50-foot setback. And at one point, the actual building itself is 30 feet from a neighbor's property line for which they want a variance. The proposed dumpster enclosure is along the 50-foot border. The playing field is just 20 feet from two homes and all are routinely high noise activities. Finally, a petition was supposed, was submitted to the Greest Board in protest at the permanent, permit. Residents expect, expressed numerous concerns, including noise from playing fields, bus traffic, congestion and impact to the neighborhood. Our position is that we have a petition at Change Org with currently 1,556 signatures. A paper petition has more than 200 and many of us have and will speak at every opportunity. So by every indication, intensity of use, noise and traffic, it would create a drastic and lasting detrimental effect on the character of our quiet neighborhood. Each weekday, U-Prep operations would more than double the effective size of our neighborhood, effectively doubling the need for first responder services, water demand, trash, sewer. You all represent us, our town, our community and our neighborhoods. And we, your citizens and taxpayers and voters, ask that you exhibit the same fortitude and spine that the Greest Town Board members did and recommend this proposal be declined.
Next speaker, Michelle. And we should be running a five-minute clock, please.
Next person that I have signed up to sign is Tim Murphy at 20 Newport Road.
Tim Murphy, 20 Newport Road. Thank you for allowing us to speak. In order to avoid asking Binnacle Point owners for a variance for a new entry to the property and to avoid using any part of the Binnacle Point Road, U-Prep is proposing to add a new entry further west so it exits along East Ridge Road. That move brings the entry point much closer to the property lines adjoining the western boundary of 300 East Ridge. So in addition to the noise created from the practice fields, from gym classes, practice sessions for modified JV varsity teams, the noise and pollution from the buses entering exiting, and exiting property will be much closer to our homes. Any, any staggering of start times will only prolong the noise and traffic created, including parent drop-off traffic. Also, it should be noted that any proposed staggering of start and pickup times is an operational matter for the school and not enforceable by the town. We take issue with a change in use that dramatically increases the density of the use of 300 East Ridge in comparison with, uh, the uses as an office building. I have attached, uh, some photos to the email taken from the property prior to COVID during weekdays, non-holiday weekdays, non-holiday weeks, showing you how packed that, how, uh, showing that the parking lot was not used to capacity as you pre- as estimated in the previous, uh, use. Because of the tree cover, you will have to enlarge the photos to see it, just have to expand it out. You'll see the count is bringing, you'll, you'll come up with your own count. Also at issue is the, is the fact that the traffic study only addresses a traffic at drop-off and pickup times. We remain concerned about inadequate parking and traffic created during the special events, including basketball games, parent events, performances, award ceremonies, scholastic competitions and other special events. Again, any operational solutions to the school offers now are not enforceable by the town. Please note that the drawings of the proposed, proposed design submitted by U-Prep to the zoning board on 618 show that the proposed buffer along the western edge of 300 East property, including existing trees, new plantings, new privacy fence will all be about 15 foot. However, the existing trees right there are planted at 15 foot. And, uh, from our lot line, so additional plantings and fence proposed will be within the area that U-Prep plans to have a running track around the playing field. This is not clear in the renderings. We continue to oppose the repurposing of 300 East as a school because it is a significant change in use that it will have a detrimental impact on our quality of life. We have lived in this home for 15 years. When a tree fell on the house in 2017, we made significant investments in our homes to just setting up us to stay there through our retirement years because we live in a quiet residential neighborhood. A large high school would change the nature of our neighborhood significantly. Thank you for considering our options, our issues.
What's this picture for? I was trying to. I was trying to...
Well, if you can zoom in, it's just another aspect of how many cars are in the parking lot and...
It's the parking lot behind us.
Yes, exactly. All three of them. I know, I pull up my camera, it's like, I got pictures I can use, because their last thing, estimated 176 car users, that's just used for proof that it's not the case. So their study would be, needs to be redone.
Thank you.
All right.
Diane Hamilton, 161 Baycrest Drive.
Good evening.
Can we move that?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Diane Hamilton. I've been a resident at 161 Baycrest Drive for 46 years. We raised our family at this address and have always loved our quiet neighborhood. I continue to have major concerns regarding the increase of traffic twice daily at 3,000 Ridge Road East. In caustic engineering's May 26 response to planning board's sketch plan comments, they listed a schedule staggering drop-off and pickup of bus times, which quote, "will result in a very minimum queuing on-site," unquote. Nowhere is it listed about how many number of students will be coming to and from school by private vehicles. The morning bus schedule starts at 8:15 and ends at 9:06. Listed are 13 morning buses arriving anywhere between 1 and 5-minute increments. Four of the morning buses show only one student. How do the other 500-plus students get to school? Obviously, they can't be all arrive on the other nine buses. They have to come by private vehicles. For the afternoon bus schedule, pickup starts at 3:30 and ends at 4:45, and five buses are listed at the same time, 4:00 PM. Again, there are 13 buses, and the schedule only shows five students on the four buses. So how do the other 500 students get home? Again, not on the other nine buses, but via private vehicles. The morning bus schedule starts at, the morning bus schedule runs for 45 minutes, and the afternoon bus schedule runs for 1 hour and 15 minutes. That means residents could literally be held hostage in our homes during these time periods. Again, this schedule is for buses only. Nowhere is there a schedule for parent drop-off and pickup or for the 85 staff members entering or leaving the property. As we all know, schedules look great on paper, but once a little glitch throws the schedule, but one little glitch throws the schedule completely off. As has been stated at previous meetings, East Ridge Road and all surrounding roads are only two lanes with no shoulder. Again, where would the buses and private vehicles go when waiting to get in the parking lot? Diesel buses idling on Ridge Road, cars backed up and circling on Side Street is not an option. This amount of daily traffic will, quote, "substantially increase traffic above present levels." As I stated before, this property is basically landlocked and not a suitable location for any school of this size, and it would drastically change the character of our neighborhood. In the end, the developer, contractor, engineers, and real estate agents, they get paid, they walk away, they don't think twice about how they've impacted our quiet neighborhood where people have put their heart and souls in their homes. Would you want 600-plus students, noisy diesel buses idling, excess of vehicles entering and leaving your quiet neighborhood twice daily? I think not. Listen to the residents and deny this application. Thank you.
Do you have any more, Michelle and Louis?
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to catch up on my typing. So next person is Anthony McLean, 2716 East Ridge Road.
Did you give one to Michelle too?
My name's Anthony McLean. As mentioned, I live at 2716 East Ridge Road. Before I start, I must say I'm eagerly anticipating a look at this sound report that arrived today. Most of you now know that I spent my life in the sound business, and it sure sounded to me like there was some gobbledygook in that text I heard. Just hold that in mind. I'm not going to do this entire presentation because many other people have said many other things, and I'm not a lawyer, nor did I play one on TV. But I want to point you to page 7, point B, point B on page seven of the New York Consolidated Laws Education Law, E D N 2852, which can be viewed on the internet. And it states, "The applicant," in this case, UPREP, "shall provide an analysis of community support for such relocation and of the projected programmatic and fiscal impact of the charter school on the proposed new school district being Arondacoit and other public and non-public schools in that area." I'm the lead of a group called Arondacoit Citizens Group Alliance, rather, and we are unaware of any such community support analysis. As far as we can tell, none of us have ever been contacted by anyone directly at UPREP asking if we have any support or comments. So if this is the law, that you need to have community support for such a relocation, we can stop now because there is none. If I were to look back in the room tonight, I don't see a lot of supporters. And there aren't any. So that's point one. The second point is, how much is it going to cost? Do any of you know what this will cost the city over time on a fixed-cost basis? I know the answer is no, because no one's thinking about it, but it's a big deal. So if we can't answer these two questions, then this proposal has run afoul of the law before it should get any consideration. You can read the other stuff about noise and the fact that there were never 176 cars in that lot ever, and that was the foundation cornerstone of the traffic study. That's all I want to say.
Next, I have Nancy McLean, 2716 East Ridge Road.
Nancy McLean, 2716 East Ridge Road. Hard act to follow, and I live with it. So how many times have we gathered here to discuss this relocation? And yet, to me, their plan is very vague. There are no specifics, there are no true studies or results given, and when they tried to show their building materials at the last meeting, I was like, I don't give a hoot what you build on that in building. I hope you never get to use them. Why have your students, why have UPREP students travel so far to go to school? Why force this into a residential area? I just don't understand. My next concern is, and the last time I spoke also, was variances. How many variances does one project get? They get traffic variances, they get parking lot variances, they get 50-foot variances from the lot, they get sound variances. How many? And why? I mean, who is it benefiting? If this was a crime scene, I would say, follow the money, which is, that's what they always do in the movies. There doesn't seem to be that to follow. So there's some other motivation here, whether it's political gain or career gain, but there is something that a single person will gain and our community will lose. One thing that they are very vague about is their culinary program and the exhaust and the waste that will occur with that. They haven't addressed that in the least. For me, the last, at the last meeting, when we were not allowed to speak, which is really difficult for all of us, the Empire Fire Chief, his report was read aloud into the record, that alone should have stopped it because part of this is student safety. I mean, where are those students going to go when there's a fire alarm or worse? And where is the snow removal going to go when that happens? So just the safety of students should be a priority. And then, the other considerations, when you are increasing the population like that, what pressure does this put on the Arondacoit Fire Department, Police Department, EMTs? How are we going to enlarge their force so that they are not overstressed with the added number of people that they are responsible for? I don't know. That's a lot. And you're there, sitting on the board. You are responsible to their citizens, and obviously, we citizens are not all for this. And so I am hoping that you hear us, and at least I think we've brought some pretty darn good facts to this meeting, at every meeting. So please just listen, and if we can defeat this, I believe our next stage is to have this property rezoned to never be a school. It's not just UPREP. This is an inappropriate space for a school with school buses and this number of people in it. So hopefully, we get to move on to rezoning. Thank you.
Michelle, before you call the next speaker, I just wanted to see if maybe the deputy town attorney or myself, we could maybe take a moment just to chat, just to remind folks, right? These are, these are great comments. These are comments that the planning board is definitely listening to. Just a reminder that what the planning board has in front of them is a site plan application. And so, discussion about the, about the use of the property, we've gone over that previously in that it is a permitted use, and we don't have, the planning board doesn't have the ability to deny the use of the property. And I'm just reminded of the Greece, the example that was brought up in the town of Greece. I did look up the meeting minutes, and that was, that was an application for a special use permit, which is very different than the site plan application that the planning board has in front of them, that you're deliberating on. So, so the planning board, yeah, we do want to hear your comments about, about the site plan and the impact that the site plan could have on, on the neighboring environment, your environment, so that those are helpful. And with regard, just with regard to seeker, even though the applicant has asserted certain positions in their Part I of the EAF, indicating, for example, that there is no significant adverse environmental impact with regard to traffic, that decision is ultimately going to be up to the planning board and not the applicant. The applicant can contend what they wish to contend, and it's up to the planning board to deliberate and look at the information that's presented and, and make that final determination as to whether or not traffic is going to be a significant problem. And, and, and the planning board is listening to what your comments are with regard to traffic as well. So is there anything else that you might want to add to help?
Yeah, no, just to echo, you know, definitely helpful to hear the comments, and they're, they're certainly considered strongly by the planning board as they're obligated to. Just a couple clarifying points. There's actually just the one variance that's needed, so it'll be the setback for the 50-feet. So the, the other issues, noise, traffic, et cetera, those are, those are site plan issues that would need to be mitigated, or if they're unable to be met, you know, adequately by the, by the applicant, the planning board would consider that in their site plan decision. So there's, there's really just the one variance. Also, a lot of folks have brought up the, the New York standard, so the town vetted this pretty substantially with SUNY, and SUNY's position was, was effectively that they're looking to the town, because of the way that UPREP is chartered, the entire siting process is deferred to the town. So while those are, you know, good guidelines, and certainly the town can look to those as, as guidelines to determine whether the, the site plan meets the, the town code criteria, those aren't, those aren't binding in this case due to SUNY's and NISED's not, they're not issuing a C of O, they're not commenting effectively on the site. So it's, it's limited to town code. They're, they're helpful and relevant to the extent that the, the town code doesn't have parameters in terms of their site plan, if they're, you know, helpful for guidance, but those aren't, aren't as binding as, as some have presented. So just a clarification point there.
Ready to continue?
Yes, please.
Next, I have Dave Nicoletti, 45 Baycrest.
Dave Nicoletti, 45 Baycrest Drive. Let's hash through some of this that other people have already talked about. I'm just concerned about this application that they filled out. There's things, as another speaker mentioned, that they didn't truthfully fill out, and the application remains on record inaccurate and correct. Okay, they answered no to the production of noise, will exceed ambient noise, and we talked about this before, yes, right? You know, what do we have now, the ambient noise? Chirping birds, car driving by. Now we're talking about 600 students, staff, movement throughout the day, we've got phys ed classes, practices, football field, we got, you know, track and field yelling, screaming, whistles blowing, music playing, they talk about boombox, noise generated from special events, additional noise, HVAC systems, and now we're talking about kitchen exhaust fans blowing. They answered no to the odor. There's going to be odor, right? Got buses, you got 14 of them now, maybe more, cooking taking place, we got odors from the rotting food in the dumpster. Now this incorrect application stays on record, correct? Also answered no to traffic, and we're all talking about traffic. They answered no to a significant increase in traffic. Well, there is an increase in traffic. There's no, there have been no talk, and I brought this up before, residents at Woodridge Apartments. How are they going to turn left out of their parking lot to go to work in the morning when all of this other rush traffic's coming past them? There's no signal lights. Talk about staggering their times, it's just going to prolong all the congestion. Cross-section of view, north side of the property, which is back of my house. Two years ago, we put up a beautiful sunroom. The floor of our sunroom and the floor of our house is the same height as our six-foot fence. They're going to put another six-foot fence up, which is downgrade of our fence. It's going to do nothing. They're talking about putting plants in, two-to-three-foot plants? What are they talking about putting in? 20-foot evergreens? No, that's not going to happen. It's going to take years before those trees mature. It's going to take years to block our view, probably do nothing for the noise. Now it appears a bus loop has been moved to the back corner, right? Now all this bus traffic is driving behind our houses. They haven't even clearly drawn the bus traffic. I haven't seen it. Is anyone else? It's very vague. Fumes from the buses now, the noise, students entering, exiting, everyone else attending special events. special events, back in the corner by our houses. Planning Board comments, Planning Board asked if students will be entering, exiting the site on foot. This could pose a safety issue. There is no sidewalks or formalized footpaths connecting to the site. The applicant's response was a very clear, one short sentence. No students will be entering or exiting the foot on site. I've read that they have an open and closed policy. Grade six through 10 cannot leave the premises. 11 and 12 are allowed to leave at lunch. I asked the Board to clarify this with the applicant. So if that's true, as, as the Planning Board said, it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Next, I have John Nicoletti, 45 Baycrest Drive.
I'm here to finish some of Dave's comments because we didn't think he'd have enough time, but so much of this has been covered already. Lobella's Bullet Point 24 regarding parking. The project applicant is in discussions with another project owner in the immediate area with a land use that has offsetting peak parking generation. If a formal agreement is reached, they would be able to use that facility as overflow for special events. More information can be provided as it progresses. The Planning Board should ask the applicant to openly and clearly explain who's, who this other project owner is in the immediate area. Is it a project in development or an existing facility? This may negatively affect another neighborhood or more of ours in a broader sense. If it's at a facility that requires pedestrians to walk to this location, again, you know, no sidewalks, no crosswalks, which we know is a safety issue. Dave stated before on record, it's naive to think a spectator will show up to find a full parking lot, leave to park elsewhere, and then walk further or be shuttled in. Again, as John Nichols has publicly stated, people will park where they want to park. So what about the parking on Baycrest and Valley Circle? I think Nancy mentioned something about, or Karen mentioned something about people coming in around the back, so we've covered that, we don't want that. Dave spoke to a representative at Grace Baptist Church, which is the little church right nearby, and they are very concerned about their parking lot being used for overflow parking. They are already considering having to install a gate, but then realize that people would probably just park on their lawn. Lobella's Bullet Point 27 asks to clarify the anticipated hours of operation. The applicant, the applicant states anticipated hours of operation would be limited to daylight hours. This doesn't answer the question, what are the hours? Is the Planning Board picking up that this applicant is constantly contradicting themselves and not being forthcoming? So now it's daylight hours. Originally, it was listed on the application 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The traffic study says 8:30 PM, and now they're saying daylight hours. So as we all know, the sun sets closer to nine in the nicer weather, and it stays light for some time afterwards. So now they're telling us activities will indeed be going on much later than they originally stated. If there are evening activities, games, and practices, what time will this activity really end, including the clearing of the parking lot? Well, when will the noise of the vehicles leaving and the pedestrians having fun in the parking lot stop? Lastly, it should be noted that U-Prep has changed the number of students several times. Looking at their floor plan, it appears that they have designed the number and size of classrooms to accommodate 600 students, but now they're back to 525. They've already revealed the plan to expand to 600. So in five years, when the state requires them to renew their charter, we all know that they're going to then apply for 600.
I'm sorry, I just want to add one thing. Dave Nicoletti, 45 Baker Drive. I, I request the Planning Board to ask the applicant or consider putting up a barrier on the east side of the property to prevent people from parking on those streets and coming in the back way, because it's going to happen.
Next, I have Carolyn Jaeger from 163 Binnacle Point.
I'm Carolyn Jaeger, 163 Binnacle Point, and that's in the Mallards Landing development. I'm, this is going to be less than smooth because you've heard a lot of this, you don't need to hear it one more time. Our traffic concerns do not relate to the on and off ramps at 590, but instead to the dangerous intersection, and it is dangerous in spite of what the traffic study said, of Bay Shore, Binnacle Point, and East Ridge Road. A recent traffic study commissioned by the applicant never mentions the need for or the impact of a school zone designation in this intersection. School, school zone safety restrictions will create additional congestion and delay during arrival and dismissal times. We are asking that the Planning Board have the police depart, have the Police Department do an analysis, excuse me, an analysis addressing safety and traffic flow relating to the increased volume of both large vehicles and private cars on the intersection. Observed, there are a number of private vehicles picking up students on Lake Avenue and the surrounding side streets at the current U-Prep location. Binnacle Point and the other streets abutting the proposed site are narrow, do not have shoulders or sidewalks. Our private Binnacle Point Road is the most obvious place for parents to wait to collect children while avoiding school bus congestion. A blind curve is located east of the second right of way and presents a serious safety hazard to pedestrians and oncoming traffic when used by those not familiar with the road. Drivers cannot see ahead of that curve. To prevent accidents and protect ourselves from liability claims, a gate would need to be installed across our road. We do not want to be a gated community. A gate would impede access by emergency vehicles, be an inconvenience to our owners, as well as a major expense for our 12-member HOA. I want to reemphasize, we would need a gate, but nobody wants it. The only time the parking lot had close to 100 cars was when Ward Scientific owned the property. That firm was relocated in 1983, well before our development was built. None of the subsequent businesses have, that anybody in our area knows, have had more than 20 to 40 cars in the parking lot. Alusion may have over 160 employees, but only 20 to 40 ever used the Ridge Road site at any given time. Use of this property is a high school for over 500 active teens. With 90 staff, student support services, parental and school bus traffic will impact our liability and our quality of life. In conclusion, our Board's goal of protecting our quiet neighborhood while maintaining property values will not be achieved with a large high school located at the end of our driveway. The noise and the increase in traffic that comes with the normal operation of a school serving 525 young men, as opposed to the operation of an office building with 20 to 40 adults, will certainly have a detrimental impact on property values and the ease of resale of all of the Newport area. Thank you for your attention.
I apologize, I will be repeating what other people said too. Good evening, my name is Jessica Schaefer, and I live at 105 Baycrest Drive with my fiance, Jason. We purchased this house, our first house, on July 8th of 2022. We have not even been there a year. So what should have been the happiest year of our lives to date has now turned into the worst, and it's increasingly perpetuated by the continuous ambiguity and lying that we've had to endure during this entire process. So I'd like to start tonight by addressing some truths. It took at least three instances for U-Prep to tell the truth about the buses. First, it was five, then seven, and now 10. A simple Google search could tell anyone, only 48 adult-sized passengers fit onto a school bus. With 525 students, that's 11 buses. If they are to increase enrollment, that means even more buses. It also took three instances that I was present for, for U-Prep to admit they cook food at their facility. I have been to their current facility and toured it with several of my other neighbors, and they do in fact cook food to serve to their students, and they do catering events. So we are going to smell it. The Planning Board asked several times about the campus being a closed campus, already brought up, and the answer was, that's what we currently are. So where's our guarantee that's, that, that that is how it's going to stay? We brought up our concerns of privacy and trespassing, and without a written guarantee, our best interests are being ignored. It took not one, but two traffic studies for Nichols Construction to give somewhat useful data because it was easier to admit all of the roads affected than tell the truth that this school will affect traffic immensely. I take 590 to work every single day, and every morning and evening, the traffic is horrendous. There are backups from the 490, 590 split all the way up to our on-ramp. On my way home, the 590 splits to 104 caused major traffic jams, especially when drivers are trying to merge on the backs, backup Webster exit from the Arondacoit lane. Anybody who's getting off at Ridge Road knows what I'm talking about, from 4:00 to 5:30. And I think that when they state there will only be a delay in traffic, that everyone in this room has to be super naive to even think that it won't be a major impact. So when we brought up parking concerns, we were met with, and I quote, "People will park where they want to." So instead of providing a solution, they've now made their problem our problem. So Baycrest is not wide enough for people to park on both sides and accommodate residential traffic nor emergency services. So how about the necessary paperwork gets filed to make our roads no on-street parking? All of us have driveways, simple as that, and nobody's on our streets. So Arondacoit already prohibits parking on public roadways or grass on right-of-ways annually from November 1st through April 15th. It's already in place for six months of the year. What is another six months? So we, then, no one would be parking on our yards, we wouldn't have to worry about people barking on both sides of the street, their problem's no longer our problem, and most importantly, there would never be an issue with emergency vehicles accessing our roads to get to residents. So what about littering? Are there going to be fines enforced for this? I just received a letter today with pictures from some random person who saw our petition online, found me, my name, and my address, and brought up all the concerns that they have addressed with this school already. And the response was, they will not be doing anything. And they provided pictures. I would like to give this to the town for a copy, but I just got it today, so. So, so this letter stated all the currents, the concerns we already have, and they're saying that they're factual, our concerns are factual at the current location. So this individual added that the littering from and near the school is, and I quote, "ghastly." They also stated it took several attempts to even get a response from the school, and she was told there was nothing they were going to do about it. I do have time to read the letter tonight, but I would like the town to make the copy. And I would also like to state that I don't know this person, I've never met this person, and I have no affiliation with this person. But I guess they felt compelled enough to find me and my address based on their current experience with the school. So we also brought up concerns about noise, and U-Prep continues to push the limits of how close they are getting to our properties. Just because the code states a 50-foot setback is required for R1, that does not mean that it's appropriate in this situation. And again, I'll bring up the NISED website, does say they should have a 10-acre base, so with an additional acre for every 100 pupils. So that puts them at 15 acres minimum, and they're trying to do it in a third of the space. I know the attorney, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, you stated it's a guideline. Well, I hope that a guideline wouldn't let them do 30% of what is acceptable for the state. So the gym is going to be 50 feet from at least six people's property lines, including mine. So what kind of noise barriers are going to be installed inside the gym to be certain that those of us who will be within 100 feet of it while inside our homes are not affected by the noise? What about the giant blocking view they're imposing as well? Is this gym going to be 35 feet high? Would any of you purchase a house that was located in such close proximity to a school gym? And on top of that, you're going to force us to live in a construction zone for at least a year? What about those of us that work from home, like my fiancee? What noise restrictions are you going to impose on the construction company so people can continue to live and work in peace? They say all this effort is to get a space for the kids. They've also stated several times to the press that they are continuing to look at other properties. So where were they when the 11.5 acres that their Arondacoit City School District bid on went up for sale? This effort is for the school administrative members alone. They have the money, as they stated in the first meeting that we all went to with the EI School Board, so they have the power, and they can disregard who they hurt in the process. You think the kids want to switch from practicing on a full football field and full track to a square track and still have to outsource the events at a field? You think they want to attend a school in a town they don't even live in? You are continuously trying to convince yourself and others that you're doing this for the kids, and really, this is just a plan to grow a business until there are enough kids enrolled to have enough money to purchase another site that has everything they want. This will be the third time this school has moved since inception. They continuously move to the next place and to the next place. They are attempting to purchase a temporary space for the kids and give them a crammed, half-put-together idea for their own self-satisfaction. Just because you have the money to buy this space does not mean it's even close to an appropriate space for the school and students. The town board continues to ask questions to U-Prep regarding our concerns, which is greatly appreciated. But you are not requiring written or binding agreements, which have already been addressed. So your job is to represent members of this, this community and protect our best interests.
The timer, the timer went off a little bit ago.
I only had like three more sentences. But I, I could be done. So all I was going to say was, so we pay almost $8,000 a year in taxes to live here, and I'm sure that's now true for our neighbors after the assessments. And as a citizen of Arondacoit and a voter, I'd like to know who I'm to turn to when these verbal agreements are violated. Is it members of the Board, Arondacoit PD? What if you guys leave or you're not re-elected? I mean, who's going to be there to speak for the residents of the community and enforce these verbal agreements? Let's all hold each other accountable, speak the truth, and put necessary regulations into place so this neighborhood's environment and character is protected. Thank you.
Real quick, West Pettie Town Engineer, Lobella Associates. I'd like, really like to stress that folks keep their comments directly related to the site plan application itself.
Guys, guys, please. Guys, please.
Hey, nobody's signing up for an 11:00 PM meeting for their own interest, so just don't talk crazy about it.
Please, please.
No, 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 no. They're talking about what's in their livelihood.
Guys, guys, if this continues, I'm going to stop the meeting. Who's the next speaker, please? Otherwise, I'm going to stop the meeting. Who's the next speaker?
Jason Zukowski, 395. Oh, Jason Zukowski, 395 Hellendale Road. Bobby Porter, 6 Baycrest Drive.
Hi, my name's Bobby Porter, 6 Baycrest Drive. I wasn't going to sign up, but then when I heard that, that restaurant in Arondacoit where the pizza place was, they were talking about parking and traffic, it's only a little place with 30 tables. And look at ours with our kids coming in, you know, students, and it's just not right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have. Well, that's all I have signed up on this list, so.
Those who want to speak, please line up behind the podium so that we can get through this. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's William Farrell, 149 Binnacle Point, and I'm the president of the Homeowners Association there. What I was going to, I, I associate myself with every comment we've already heard tonight. I wholeheartedly agree. But what I was going to hope to do once and for all is clarify the issue of the road. I was in charge of the repaving project of our road last year, and earlier this year, on January 11th, I gave the town a letter from 2008 from a previous town commissioner who turned over the road to Mallards Landing. And the point at which it begins, if I can use their chart here, I can, I was hoping to show you on this chart.
Can we give them a microphone, please? Can we give them a microphone, please, so we can hear?
I assume some of you have been over to the property? Well, all you have to see is where the town stopped painting the lines, and that's where the road ends. This has continued to not show correctly where Binnacle Point Road starts. And the history of this is that the easements that they speak of, this entrance and this entrance here, were granted by the guy who divided the property, when this was going to be East Ridge Road before there was any consideration of Binnacle Point even being there. All right, in 2008, after previous board members petitioned the town to pave the road because it was falling apart, instead of that, the town gave it to us. And I provided the letter to the town on January 11th, which they were unaware of, by the way, when I gave it to them. Right here is where Binnacle Point Road begins. This is all of our property here, except for these seven houses here. We own all this property, all the way back, including right here, which is going to be the subject of the zoning hearing. It shouldn't be a question as to why this needs to be clarified further. And again, go out there, see where the lines stop, that's where the town stopped painting it. See where the curb or the cut is in the pavement, that's where we started our repaving project last year for $40,000 that the town wouldn't pick up the cost of to repair. So are there any questions about this remaining? These two easements were granted once again when this was supposed to be a public road. Now, these are private easements here. The original road, as they're now proposing, goes in just like this to the front of the old Ward's building. And the town's easement is the only one that they're talking about here. Everybody got a picture of it?
I would have to look.
I handed it to Donna Martello on January 11th, when we were meeting, and you were listening in on the meeting.
I will have to.
Yeah, I think we have that, and we also have, somebody else took pictures of the road for us.
So there should be no question why they continue to do drawings and fail to show Binnacle Point Road beginning here, which is misleading in all their drawings.
My name is Maria Masura, 85 Bay Crest Drive, and I just have a question. That map right there, is that the current, where they're going to put the gym? Because my house is like right behind it, and there's a hill there. So I'm wondering, are they going to level that land off and then put the gym? And how far are they coming to the property line? Because right now, there's all trees there. Are they coming right, are they going to put the fence right up to the property, on their property line? Because according to this, it only has, let's see. My mom is 85, so this is the new proposed gym. So Mrs. Schaefer is here, Nadia King is here, this is me, and then a little of my next neighbor. So according to the diagram, only one, two, three, and a half houses are going to be affected to the addition, and I just want to know if that's true. Only three? It doesn't seem, it seems like there will be more houses.
We don't usually answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. If the applicant chooses, when they come up, they can respond.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so that was my question, and then about the, my mom's been there 50 years.
You can request copies from the, from the.
Foil?
From the, no, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle.
Because it's a scheduled public hearing.
Oh, okay. So that was my only question. When I look on my phone and I enlarged it, there's only three houses that were affected, and we, there's a hill there. So I'm wondering, are they going to level all that off? That's all, that's how my question was, because it still hasn't been addressed on the hill part. So that's, that's all, I was just wondering.
Any other questions? I know you've already been up before.
I've been up for two minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a sound message.
You gotta, you gotta use a microphone if you're not going to be at the podium.
This is a single point. I'm sure it wasn't included in the last-minute submission. This is Anthony McLean, I'm at 2716.
Sir, sir, you're supposed to be addressing the board so we can see what you're talking about.
Well, I have to turn for the microphone.
We can get you a, we can get you a microphone. This is what I was trying to tell you.
Almost physically impossible. Anthony McLean, 2716 Ridge Road. I'm sure this was not in the last-minute submission on Friday that none of us got to see before we got here today. But if in fact the buses have been moved from the front loop up into this corner of the parking lot, they have moved 100 feet. Sound decreases over distance. Sound increases with distance. So now we have, instead of 150 feet away around this loop, we have the buses that have created already an unbearable sound over time now 25 feet away. They moved it up there, and it will include Knox's fumes. And in the summer, they'll be really bad because people will have all their windows open. They may not hear it so much in November. So as you think about this, think about this cluster of noise and gas right here in this corner, and guarantee you, it is unexplained in Friday's report.
Thank you.
Joyce Chris, 175 Binnacle Point.
Mine pulled, mine.
Could I take that one?
I want to use this map, too. So my question now is, it looks like the buses come down here, nobody's really talked about this, but I'm just looking, and I think the only thing I can imagine is the buses come down here, and they come in here, and they come around the parking lot, and I guess they finally go out here. So I'm not sure, it sounds like this is where the bus stops to empty the, empty the bus, okay? So how many buses are we fitting here? And the rest of them are sitting on this road? This road that has no shoulder on either side? Okay, so the buses are, any backup is going to be sitting on this road, and any car that tries to get down here to go to Binnacle is probably not going to be able to get around a bus. And especially if we have a fire truck or an ambulance, can they get around a waiting bus? Because I don't know where else these buses are going to wait. It's the only thing I can infer. So that's a problem.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Okay, I'm going to keep the public hearing open. Would the applicant like to speak to any of the comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's close to midnight. I think probably best we respond to those pertinent comments in writing to the board.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I think we're going to leave this, that we're going to table it again for the rest of the information? So regarding PB 20, remember, there's a meeting still going on, so if you are leaving, please leave quietly. In regards to case number PB 2023-04-1, make the motion that we table this for the additional information required, requested that we spoke to. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's that? Michelle, you okay we do the minutes at the next meeting? Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.